Portage County Board of Supervisors meeting, recorded February 20, 2024.
It's five o'clock. We'll call the Portage County Board to order. One correction or change before we start. We've got a full agenda tonight, and I'm going to, once we get into this, I'm going to have the invocation, and we're going to check the two presentations, both from the airport, and then the recognitions or awards, and then go to the public input after that. So I wanted to make sure everybody's aware of that. And the clerk will call the roll.
We have twenty, excuse me, twenty supervisors present. Three supervisors are remote: Supervisor Hakala, Supervisor Sislevich, and Supervisor Oki, and two supervisors excused: Supervisor Madine and Supervisor Morrow.
Pledge to the flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Invocation by Supervisor Moresi.
I invite you all to sit down, please. I know there's folks in here who can't stand. Don't worry, it will not be that long. I invite you all to sit, reflect, and find that place where you find inner peace and wisdom. Aho, great spirits, we thank you for your patience tonight as we deliberate on the issues that beset and affect the land and people of Portage County. I want to acknowledge, Portage County occupies the traditional lands of the Menominee and the Ho-Chunk people, a people who are still here and thriving. I also want to acknowledge a deep history of immigration and settlement to these lands that became known as Portage County. Great waves of people migrated here to settle on its diverse landscapes, bountiful soils, clear, fresh waters, and deep sense of community. I want to acknowledge us as a community today with many needs and concerns about the future of our land and people. And as we look to the future, at the new, I want to acknowledge the new faces and cultures that will enrich our community and be strapped with the blessings and burdens of decisions that we make today. I look to my children and to the generations ahead and make these decisions with great consideration for the benefit of their future and for the benefit of caring for our earth. Let us know that we are all neighbors and focus on what unites us as a community. Let us all take a moment to reflect on the past, on today, and into the future in hopes of finding the courage to make honorable decisions. Aho.
Next item, presentations, number three. Brian Graff, Central Wisconsin Airport Director, Airport Update.
Good evening. Thank you for having me. I'm Brian Greifey. I'm your airport director. I use those words deliberately in that Portage County is part owner of the Central Wisconsin Airport with Marathon County. I am supervised by Supervisor Lattick and Supervisor Morrow, as well as citizen member Lonnie Crogwold, along with four representatives from Marathon County. I'll keep it brief. I know you've got a full agenda, but feel free to ask questions as I go. I've been in this role just over eight years now. Before this, I've been in senior leadership roles in Aspen, Colorado, and Duluth, Minnesota. Next slide, please.
Okay. There's just a delay.
Okay. As you can see on the slide, this is the Central Wisconsin Airport up in Mozzanee. We have just over 1,800 acres owned by both Portage County and Marathon County. Two runways with full ILS to runway eight and runway three-five, those are the yellow boxes you see up there. We have air traffic control services, class Delta airspace from 6:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m. daily, full commercial service terminal, as you know, with service from Delta, American, and Avelo, Spirus Medevac, full-service FBO, maintenance, repair, and operations-based, operated by Delta, by Endeavor, and then a growing agricultural enterprises, which I'll get into in a moment. Next slide, please. As that's coming up, it's our 2024 airport budget. Our budget is approximately $5 million. Of that, $3.6 million is operating expense, and another $1.4 million that is money borrowed from fund balance for services, excuse me, for projects that will be paid back later. And then also, some of the operations expense will be paid for by CARES-type, CARES, CRISA ARPA, COVID fund funds. Primary sources of revenue are parking, vehicle parking, of course, the airlines pay fees, land and hangar leases, rental cars, farming, ground transportation, concessionaires, and advertising. The most important note on that is we do not use county levy money to operate. So all revenues generated needed to operate the airport are generated right on the airport. So no local tax levy dollars. It's not to say some of our projects aren't funded through outside sources, particularly, we do rely on funds from the FAA and the state of Wisconsin for projects, but generally, those are user-based systems. So for example, our large projects that I'll get into in a couple slides are funded 90% by the Federal Aviation Administration. That's through the Aviation and Airway Tax Fund. That is a user-based system. It's funded by fees on ticket sales, passengers, aviation fuel, and cargo. Air service, I want to take a pause and thank Portage County. Give yourselves a round of applause. The reason we have Avelo is because of your quick action, among others, but a big part of the reason we got Avelo service is because of Portage County. So thank you again for that. If you recall, this was passed, there is a local share. It was passed last summer. I didn't realize we needed to have that secured before we actually applied for the grant, so we turned that around in about two weeks, and it worked. This was a small community air service development grant by federal DOT, and it is the one reason, that and strong demand, we are able to get to Avelo service and now have a low-cost carrier. Show of hands, who's used it? All right, so you all have an assignment, is to go out and buy tickets. We do have to use it for them to stick around, but so far, it seems to be going pretty well. The other airlines, American and Delta, you may have noticed, American just announced their third, brought back their third flight to Chicago-O'Hare last week. That's great to see. They will continue to grow because there's plenty of demand. That said, growth on legacy carriers will be slow, and that's driven primarily by a plane and pilot shortage. If you haven't heard about it, definitely look it up. I won't spend a lot of time on that today, but regional airports the size of Central Wisconsin are impacted more than larger airports. We're doing better than some of our peers, but certainly there's more opportunity as we go to the future. Real quick, I just want to talk about the impact of Avelo. The slide you see on your left is our typical catchment area, and that's not any more sophisticated than, if you're closest to Seaway, you should be flying out of Seaway. That's your kind of pinkish box up there. What you see on the right is the Avelo impact, and you can't see a lot of details on that, but essentially, we're pulling from the entire state. So those low-cost fares on Avelo with nonstop service to Orlando is pulling from essentially every corner of the state, as well as the UP, Minnesota, even some down in Iowa. Next slide, please. Next slide is our capital development. The last three to four years, we've really been focused on the airfield. Last year, we completed an $18 million project to shift our runway, bring a new instrument landing system, bring LED lights for the entire airfield, move our taxiway two feet. That's on the back of a project three years ago to reconstruct our crosswind runway, which was about $16 million. So now, our airfield is essentially brand-new and in great shape into the future. So it'll be a great asset for years to come. Now that that's in good shape, we just completed, the airport board approved the airport master plan and airport layout plan earlier this month, and we can focus on some vertical development, specifically, it's called the Terminal Area Master Plan, but it's really every building that we have, we're going to look at, if it makes sense, other than the terminal building. Next slide will explain that in somewhat detail. So again, the Terminal Area Master Plan focuses really on everything but the airfield. But as approved, at least from a planning standpoint for the board, it's really a focus on general aviation. Since COVID, that has been the quickest to recover and quite honestly exceeded our pre-COVID numbers. It's the fastest-growing aspect of our business right now, general aviation. And some of our facilities are aged and really don't support the type of user, the type of visitor we see as a gateway to the airport. Real quick, I'll go through the development that's at least anticipated over the next three years. Of course, this all has to be approved by the board, but this is generally the layout that we would look at doing it in. You can see number five, the pink hangar up on the northeast corner of the map, that is a new general aviation facility to support large corporate jets, basically the type of aircraft we see right now that we cannot support. Design probably this year, construction next year. Moving down from that, number three, you can see the one kind of in the center of the map, that is the general aviation terminal building, where planes park to get their services, non-commercial aircraft. Our current one doesn't meet our needs, doesn't meet the demands of our users. We've got a good opportunity now with the bipartisan infrastructure law funding to get that, to get that built and get that built relatively quickly. So I see that construction starting, not this year, as soon as next year, possibly the year after. Then after that, we can look at expanding our, the large box that's labeled number one and two, our airport rescue and firefighting and snow removal storage facility. A lot more detailed than that, but I know you're on a short timeline, so I will leave it at that. Certainly ask me or Supervisor Lattick if you have any questions. With that, that is my relatively brief report. Any questions for me?
I have one question. Is Avelo talking about adding any more destinations other than Florida?
Yes. One that's high on our list, I think it's our number-two destination out of the airport, and something they're looking at growing is Las Vegas. So that is high on the conversation. I actually have a meeting with them next week. But then also, in the grant and the minimum revenue guarantee we have with them, they can fly Fort Myers or Punta Gorda and Phoenix. So we'll be talking all those destinations. The most likely next destination would be Las Vegas, though.
And I know part of that reason was they were waiting for planes that were off lease to be able to get them, and that has happened as well?
That has not happened. That's been their biggest headache in their operation. So there's a airline in Brazil that's had some financial difficulties, and as such, they've reached an agreement to purchase back some of their planes, very new aircraft. The delivery of those have been slower than they expected. I think they were supposed to have another four by now, and they've gotten one of them. So there's a few more coming on that in front.
Any other questions? If not, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Number four, award and recognition to Cooper Erickson, Ethan Olds, Kevin Hop, and Don Benke for their sacrificial, compassionate, and courageous acts of service.
Good evening, county supervisors, ladies and gentlemen of the public. The county executive position can be kind of challenging at times, and other times it can be very, very rewarding. Tonight is going to be one of my most rewarding opportunities while I've been in my tenure. There's a lot of great people that have come across in Portage County. For example, there's a Plover couple that was just reported to the Metro Wire where they gave of his kidney where he met somebody out of the blue, and he found out he was doing 10 hours of dialysis a day. He decided to have his kidney taken out and given this gentleman a kidney. He actually developed a program called Organ Trail and allowing people to donate organs for people who need them. And he lives in Plover. He's part of the Portage County community. We actually have, Steve Sislevich has actually been awarded the Small Business of the Year Award by the Portage County Business Council for his generosity financially and also developing a highly acclaimed bowling team in the Amherst area. It gives thousands of hours of service to them. Heather Nguyen with the ADRC was just recently recognized for her contributions for the United Way. And today, we have, there was two young men who, part of the SPAS Cow's Country Team, when I read about the article, I was just highly encouraged by what they did. And I'd like to actually bring up Cooper Erickson and Ethan Olds. You guys can talk right here. I'm going to switch microphones. And they were in a race, and actually, explain to make sure I get this right, Cooper, but I believe that actually you were fairly close to the finish line. Something happened that stopped you from going to the finish line. So at that point, could you explain what was all taking place?
Yeah, so it's the final stretch of the race, you know, the most exciting part, the part that everyone wants to watch. And we're all sprinting towards the finish line, and cross-country is really a culture, so we call each other friends. And I saw my friend take a stumble because he just couldn't quite make it. And in that moment, instincts just kind of took over for us, and we acted upon that and trying to help him.
Okay, so I mean, so all of a sudden, how did you notice? I mean, how far are you from the finish line, Cooper?
Probably like 15 meters.
Okay, so he's right there, could have won the race, but you, so how did you notice? How far behind was the gentleman from Marquette?
He was actually in front of me. So it went, my teammate, Aloysius, and then it was going to be him, Seppi is his name, from Marquette, and then it was me and Ethan.
Okay. And so then, Ethan, so you're actually, you were kind of like, how far were you behind Cooper?
I was probably another like 50 meters behind Cooper.
Okay. And so you saw him fall, and you helped him across the finish line. Okay. To me, that's awesome. I've been involved in sports, and my whole training was to win. You know, when I read about this, it's just like, this is awesome. It needs to be encouraged, needs to be honored, needs to be exemplified, especially at this young age. Unfortunately, Coach Benke can't be with us, but I was hoping to meet him tonight, but he's actually taking care of his family. And so the apple doesn't fall usually too far from the tree. So, you know, marriage and parenting isn't for wimps, and usually to get two young men like this, it takes some encouragement, some planning, some sacrifice. So I'd like to have Mr. and Mrs. Olds maybe come up and maybe give us a word or two of, you know, what's your philosophy of how to maybe kind of develop this kind of culture in young men?
Yeah, definitely. We are very, very proud of Ethan and Cooper. They were inadvertently tested. Their character was tested, and they made the right decision, which as parents is what we're all hoping to end up with at the end of 18 years. But the adage, "It takes a village to raise a child" is certainly true, and there are a lot of members in this community that can take credit for the outcome of these young men. And the SPAS cross-country program is definitely a big piece of that. They are far more than just a running program. Coaches, Don, Kevin, Harrison, Sam, they are role models for these young men. They are fostering the type of character that you saw in Cooper and Ethan if you read the story about them. So it is really a testament to the wonderful program, and we are so very grateful that we're a part of this community, and our son has had the opportunity to be with such amazing people.
And like just, Mrs. Olds said, it takes, you know, a community. Along with that community, sometimes parents need help. And we all have gifts, talents, abilities, and I'd like to have Coach Hop come up and just give them, how do you develop a culture that somebody, a young man or young individuals are able to make those kind of decisive, courageous, sacrificial acts? So I'd like to, again, I recognize Coach Woods, and if you could just give us, you know, how you develop that kind of, you know, unity, cooperation, and again, culture within that organization?
First of all, thank you for having us here and honoring these young men for what they did. They are two outstanding young men, and they're just two of 99 that I get to work with every day during fall cross-country season. So these guys represent us very well along with their teammates. And, you know, it's just kind of what we do. We show up, we teach them hard work, we live hard work, we go out there and we run and bike with them. We try to like live what we preach them, right? We talk about being good teammates, we talk about being good people, we talk about working hard, and Coach Don and I try, I think, and Coach Sam and Coach Harrison try to do the same thing. So just kind of, it's about, you know, the culture comes from doing what you preach, right, what you say, actually following through on that, and hopefully, it comes through. We're role models for them. That's what I try to be for not only my own kids, but for these guys and the kids I teach at school. So if you kind of say what you're going to do, and then you follow through on that, I think other kids follow through on that as well. And, you know, we wouldn't get there as well without the parents that we have. Corey and Amy are here, and Heath and Lorraine could not make it, but they sent their older son, who is also a fine role model for our team, to be in their stead today. And without them, you know, we don't have great kids that come our way. It helps to have great kids come from great families, and, you know, there are a lot of them out there. So try to look for them. And I know a lot of times today, we look at the bad things that are happening out there, but there are a lot of great things happening out there, too, and these guys are a living example of that. So hopefully, we can continue to model that for our kids, you know, in school and in cross-country, and these guys can carry it over as they did here. So thank you.
I'd just like, on behalf of Portage County, I'd just like to hand out some little gifts. Portage County just had a plaque made for each of the runners, where basically the front page article, we put it into a frame. On behalf of Portage County, Cooper.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. On behalf of Portage County.
Thank you.
Ethan.
Okay, it's nice.
And Coach. Should be another. Coach, on behalf, put it wherever you want to put it. Thank you so much. And then also, we've just got a little plaque. For the coaches, to Coach Benke and Coach Hop, certificate says, "Of commendation for using your gifts of teaching and leadership to instill compassion, courage, decisiveness, and true sportsmanship in the youth of our community." To Ethan and Cooper, it's a reason for their compassion, courage, decisive, and encouraging actions on September 1, 2023, for elevating their team and inspiring the community to true sportsmanship.
Just great that we have people like that in our community, so good job, guys. Public notice, members of the public who wish to address the county board on specific agenda items must register their requests at this time with such comments, such comments subject to the reasonable control of the county board chair set forth in Robert's Rules of Order. Again, I want to remind everybody that they have three minutes. Direct the comments to the chair. Anybody who is getting loud or making threatening remarks may be asked to leave, and if it continues, may very well be helped out. So we have three minutes, and we're going to hold it real tight on the three minutes because of the amount of people that want to speak. If somebody else has already said it, just say, "I agree with something someone else says," so we're not repeating it for time's sake. Someone can't say, "I only use two minutes." I'm going to give my minute to somebody else. That can't be shared. And that's it. And who is the first one, Maria?
Tori Jennings and then Karen Sieg.
Thank you, Chair Haga and County Board. The decision you are making to purchase 42 acres of land at $31,000 an acre in Plover is not simply a building and infrastructure decision. Building a jail in the village of Plover will influence future economic development and put a strain on municipal services for the town and village. Do you believe that you have enough information to make an informed decision, given the long-term implications for the village, town, city, and county? I attended the space and properties meeting last week, and once again, I heard one misleading statement after another from the chair and others. Among them was the repeated statement that, quote, "We have been working on this for 20 years." While it's true that new jail discussions have been ongoing since 1995, until 2023, all of those discussions have been about downtown Stevens Point. October 3 was the first public discussion about separating the jail from the Justice Center, something that until then was said to be not possible or shouldn't be done. And only in the past month has anything been brought to light about moving the jail to Plover. There has been zero effort to make the residents of Plover aware of this plan, and you have intentionally timed this agenda item just weeks before the spring election. Portage County jail planning since the 1990s has largely ignored National Institute Corrections, evidence-based practices, along with free NIC training and technical assistance. In addition, the DOC Detention Specialist for our county has not been involved in jail planning. In her words, quote, "It's helpful to have our office involved from the beginning. This can save money," unquote. In many ways, the majority of this county board are repeating the exact same mistakes as those made for the previous jail by making staffing and the budget the driver in how all subsequent decisions are made. At no time has there been a discussion about the mission and philosophy of incarceration in Portage County, and from that, what kind of jail should we have? The reason we do not have a new jail or a jail underway is because of Don Jankowski and Al Haga. These two supervisors who point fingers at the city, at members of the public, as supervisors, are the root cause of why nothing happens. Their abject refusal to build a new jail and justice center on land already owned by the county, on land the city will make available to the county, is the reason for two decades of wasteful spending on plans that go nowhere. If you want to follow them over another dead-end cliff, dead-end cliff, then that's on you. But if you think the residents of Plover will happily embrace this scheme, then I think you are misjudging the situation. In fact, I predict that you are creating a scenario where no one will want a jail in their backyard. What are you going to do then? Thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak.
Karen Sieg and then Marnie Mercer.
Thank you, Chairman Haga and the full board, for this opportunity to speak. I'm here to express my opposition to this proposal for both operational and fiscal reasons. Regarding the operations, I'll be brief because I believe others present here tonight will address this area further, as I just heard. However, I still want to say that I do not support separating the jail from the courthouse, and I do not support moving the courthouse or any other county operations away from the Stevens Point area. Fiscally, this purchase is completely out of order and a disservice to tax-paying citizens. Rounding numbers here, the $1.3 million to purchase approximately 42 acres equals about $31,000 an acre. First, I do not believe 42 acres is necessary for the jail and Sheriff's Department, as stated, even if some expansion for either is needed. To me, purchasing this amount of land is speculative and suspicious, and makes me wonder if the county is already strategizing to move other county operations to this site. Regarding the price, at least last week's space and property meeting, the agent stated that $30,000 or so per acre was typical for this type of land. He and others also stated that this kind of land sells quickly, which is why we must act now. The information I gathered and I'm going to share directly contradicts these statements. Each year, UW Extension Madison Agriculture Department tracks the sales and rental of agricultural land using data from the Wisconsin Department of Revenue. They've been doing this for some 10 years. In 2023, the average cost per acre for agricultural land in Wisconsin was about $5,900 an acre, the highest. The highest was $12,000 per acre in the southeast corner of our state. More specifically, the average price per acre for agricultural land in Portage County purchased in 2023 was only about $5,000 per acre. The record also shows that there were only six sales of over 35 acres per sale of ag land in Portage County, which is actually was very small compared to other counties in the state. I do not believe that this kind of land is continually getting purchased beneath the county's feet as quickly as it had been implied. Overall, I think Portage County can and should take the time to find a more economical location and save the county over $1 million. Thank you.
Marnie Mercer, and then George Kraft.
Good evening. Maybe to the relief of many, I won't speak today about how I think you should vote on the matter of the property designated for the new law enforcement facility. But I will touch on a couple of related issues, and those are responsiveness, transparency, and change management. In the two years that I have lived in Stevens Point, I have emailed everyone on the board at least once regarding issues that were coming up in committee or before the full board. In response to those emails, Supervisors Marisi, Honnell, and Gifford have spoken to me directly or engaged me in other forums. Supervisor Rockman has responded to every email I have sent with thoughtful commentary. Supervisors Dubek, Elke, and Haga have also responded to my emails. That leaves 19 supervisors who have never responded, including the supervisor in my own district. I've heard many people question why we can't attract young people to work here. This board can't even catch up with my generation's preferred method of communication, let alone the next generation. I would guess that Supervisor Haga, and I do not agree on many things, but when I emailed him a question about an action coming before a committee, he and corporate counsel answered the question quickly and factually. Consequently, I didn't speak on that issue, because I was formed and found the answer reasonable. We even found a couple other points of agreement in that email chain. Yes, some people be angry, have the wrong facts, or simply disagree with you. In those cases, it's easy to fall back on a bedrock principle. The only thing in our lives we can control is our own response in any given situation. It takes five seconds to respond with, "Thank you for your thoughts. I will consider them." Maybe 10, I've seen some of you type. Sheriff Lucas and I do not agree on all things related to law enforcement, but we agree that it's a shame that people can't sit down and have an honest conversation about things. The school board has put forth a referendum to ask for $14 million. The proposal to buy this land is about 1/10th the cost of that referendum. If you put even 1/10th of the effort into educating the public on this matter that they have put into the referendum, you might find a more receptive audience, or at least one that understands the considerable issues you've had to wrestle with in the process. In business, we call that change management, the method by which changes to process, policy, or strategy are socialized and communicated. But I sent an email to the committee containing a heartfelt account of my experience in responding to the shooting death of a fellow detective while transporting a suspect from the jail to the courthouse, and not one voting member of the committee responded. If you don't share information and explain the change, and when I say this, I don't mean at a meeting at 11 o'clock on a Monday when most citizens can't attend, you will be left with this. If you are not transparent, people will assume conspiracy. Regardless of whether I agree or not with the purchase of this land, I believe a lot of work has gone into trying to find a compromise. But if you don't share that vision and the facts behind it in multiple ways over multiple sessions, how would anyone ever know? In conclusion, my ask today is twofold. Respond to the citizens of this county when they reach out, regardless of how they do it, and be transparent about your plans and do better about communicating change. Thank you.
George Kraft, and then Tor Anderson.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, Supervisors. We come through a long and demanding and flawed process, code of conduct process in the case of Mr. Supervisor Peterson. I hope we get that fixed, but I'd like to speak right now on the specifics of the resolution that's being forwarded on the code of conduct violations. The narrative for giving Mr. Peterson light treatment, and that's what's in this resolution, is very light treatment, is that, geez, Dave is new, he doesn't know how to run meetings, and he gets a little excited. The fact is that Mr. Peterson has been acting with bias and malice against Portage County citizens that are concerned with polluted water, and all they want to do is be able to drink clean water. Mr. Peterson has said as much that this is his interest is to stifle this. He said, "Agriculture is my livelihood, and I was elected to protect it, not to protect the citizens of Portage County or work in their interest to protect his industry." He outright, he invited unqualified speakers to sow disinformation to committee meetings. He included handouts that disparaged folks concerned about water quality, comparing those folks to greedy rodents. He stated, "Farmers take precedence over science. Ignore the evidence. If a farmer has an opinion, that's what we're gonna run with." And, you know, one thing that's really close to my heart is the staff harassment that he and other members of the committee has done. You know that our water quality specialist, Jen McNelly, has left. She was a fine scientist, a fine outreach person, a fine employee, and she cited harassment by Mr. Peterson and other elected county officials. I was on the Nelsonville site when Mr. Peterson got there, and when he left, Jen is welled up in her eyes. She said Mr. Peterson berated her for how about the project demanded that he change the scope of it, and he said that he was there to make sure he wasn't sunbathing. Come on! How many of you go to where the highways are being built and observe what the employees are doing, tell them to change course in mid-stride, ask them if they're sunbathing? This is, this is just not regular behavior if somebody doesn't know what he's doing. You know, we gotta do something besides tell Mr. Peterson to watch some videos about how to run meetings and parliamentary procedures and that sort of thing. You gotta do something, and these trainings are available, to fight bias and harassment in workplaces. What are you gonna do if this happens again, or another supervisor does? This ends up in a toxic workplace kind of a lawsuit. You gotta send this back to the drawing board and get something in the resolutions that actually take care of the shabby conduct that we saw, and it was part of the code of conduct complaints. I thank you for your time.
Tor Anderson, and then Mildred Neville.
I will be speaking to the same topic. During the public comment period of January 9th Ethics Committee meeting, to review Supervisor Peterson's violations of the Code of Conduct ordinance, Mr. Peterson passed out a document to the committee to suggest the complaints were politically motivated. He said, quote, "As you can see from this handout article from the Rochelle Record by Lisa Anderson, the highlighted text shows Lisa Anderson has been against me," end quote. The next month, when Lisa attempted to hand out a document to the Ethics Committee to support her comments, she was not allowed. Corporate Counsel stated, "There's no handouts during public comment." He further commented, "Supervisor Peterson was responding to a code of conduct violation, so he has provided an opportunity to provide written response," end quote. But it was not his written response. It was just a handout article from the Rochelle Record. I've seen Mr. Peterson's actual written response, and it is not an article from the Rochelle Record. Corporate Counsel was there to hear Mr. Peterson say it was a handout article from the Rochelle Record. Why would he try to convince us this article was Mr. Peterson's response? But to a larger point of governance, why was Mr. Peterson allowed to distribute handouts to the committee during public comment? If there is a rule that no handouts during public comment... And if it was Mr. Peterson's response submitted to influence the committee's decision, wouldn't that need to be part of the meeting packet, so the public knew what was being deliberated? His written response is even missing from the meeting packet for this county board meeting. My code of conduct complaint was made public, which is fine. It's bulletproof in its truths, but corporate counsel and others appear to me to be using a double standard. Through this process, we've seen double standards used by those in positions of authority. We've seen citizens disrespected, being called spoiled children by LWCC leadership. And we have seen Chair Peterson demonstrate his bias towards ag, stating, quote, "Agriculture is my livelihood," and that I was elected to defend it, end quote. When they made these statements to the Ethics Committee, the group evaluating allegations of these exact things going on in LWCC, they were making it clear they have no intention of changing anything. So I think we have three levels of county obstructionism at play here. The LWCC defending ag and preventing any action to uphold their state mandate to repair contaminated waters of the state. Exec Ops, who keeps on setting up the LWCC to prevent addressing groundwater concerns, and who shows no signs today of promoting civil governance that follows any rules of conduct. And the third is the obstructionism of the Office of Corporate Counsel, who appears from so many examples to be defending the failure of the county to act on mandates of state law to protect and remediate waters of the state. This resolution for response to the code of conduct complaints does nothing to address these issues in the complaints. It's a clear signal that the current Exec Ops Committee has no intention of pursuing meaningful changes whatsoever. Thank you.
Mildred Neville, and then Jenny Larson.
I want to speak to Item 10, Code of Conduct Violation Resolution you're looking at tonight. I agree with much, with everything, basically, that the preceding speaker said, but I'm going to speak. I have other things to say as well. We have official proceedings from meetings now that do not reflect adequately what took place. There has been external counsel. I'm not complaining about the counsel, the person, but we have had external counsel who has made thousands of dollars since looking into this code of conduct, thousands of dollars. We all know what attorneys, I don't know specifically, but they make big bucks. And she's been in several of the meetings, and she's had major role in it. And you look at the minutes, they don't, they don't show that. They don't say that she was doing anything in the meetings. In the December 12th meeting, okay, wait a minute, I gotta look at my notes. I'm gonna go fast. In December 12th, December 5th, there was a closed session. She gave a three-minute talk to the open session, then there was a closed session. In that closed session, I don't know who was in charge, but I'm guessing it was external counsel, because our corporation counsel had said in the November 7th meeting that we needed to get external counsel, so we had it. But if I'm correct, she didn't even show up, her name didn't even show up on that meeting. Anyway, her name, after I brought it to their attention, did get in there as others attending. Somebody making thousands of dollars called in as external counsel, and that's in our official proceedings, nothing that indicates she was anything other than others attending. She prepared a matrix for the December 12th meeting. She sat at the table with the corporation, with the Exec Ops Plus Two Committee. And she was active throughout that meeting. There's no indication in our minutes, other than she was under others attending. Okay, I'm running out of time, but if you vote tonight, you and Mr. Peterson handed in documents that the corporation counsel that we have did not make available to the public, they were handed in before the decision was made. And if you vote tonight on this resolution, you are knowingly accepting a document that results from violation of ordinance. Not only was this not available 24 hours in advance, and I'm not talking about a handout of an article from the Rochelle News, I'm talking about his defense for himself. It was not made public. Thank you.
Jenny Larson, and then Pat Quigley.
Hello, Mr. Chair and Portage County Supervisors. I'm Jennifer Larson. I'm a resident of the Town of New Hope. Mr. David Peterson is my supervisor for the district that I live in, and I am speaking to Agenda Item Number 10, the recommended resolution by the Exec Ops Plus Two Committee. And I hope that by now, you have watched the videos and read the complaints. As a constituent of Supervisor Peterson's, I want you to know that he does not represent my views, or my values, or my opinions in any way. I'm shocked and offended by his behavior. I believe the Exec Ops recommended resolution is woefully inadequate, and I ask this full board to modify the recommended resolution or reject it completely. The resolution fails to address the harassment and hostile work environment endured by Ms. Jen McNelly as the former county water resource specialist. And I want to say that her departure from the county is a huge loss to the county and to the quest for safe and clean groundwater and water for all of us to use. Clean groundwater, many of you don't know, you think it's a rural issue, but all of your villages, municipals, towns also pay to have nitrate removed from your water. Private wells, yes, it's also a consideration and a cost for many private well owners, not all. And I'm not affected yet, but that's, who's to say when? So, this recommendation touches just the tip of the iceberg, and I have more questions for the full county board to address. How will the county address the harassment and hostile work environment endured by the former Portage County Water Resource Specialist and the Office of Planning and Zoning? How will the county ensure that future committee chairs are fully qualified to run their committee meetings according to Robert's Rules of Orders and the Portage County Code of Conduct? The subject of these complaints, newly-elected Supervisor David Peterson, was woefully unprepared and simply unqualified to serve as chair of the Land and Water Conservation Committee. He was set up for failure by even being nominated to that position. What's the place of county supervisors in employee engagement? Do supervisors have any jurisdiction over employee job duties? How will the county get a handle on the interference, manipulation, and subversion employed by just a handful of county supervisors? How will the county ensure that public comments are given consideration by committees to which they're offered? At a minimum, I ask that public comments be published in the minutes of the relevant meeting. Otherwise, where is the record of public comments? How will the county ensure transparency in government? I ask that you vote against this resolution, or possibly with some modifications that address some of my concerns. Thank you very much.
Pat Quigley, and then Ray Reeser.
Hello, my name is Pat Quigley. I live in the Town of New Hope. I'm here to talk about Agenda Item Number 10. I'm not an activist, and I don't have a contaminated well yet. I'm just an average citizen concerned about the way the Portage County government conducts its business. I've attended many of the LawCon committee meetings over the past few years, and I've witnessed firsthand how the committee operates. There's an obvious bias in favor of agricultural interests. Supervisor Peterson said it himself. Farmers take precedence over science. Farmers take precedence over everything in that committee. The committee is mandated by the state to, quote, "halt and reverse the depletion of the state's soil resources and pollution of its waters." It's not their job to protect individual interests and businesses. Under Mr. Peterson's leadership, the committee shuts down or ignores qualified experts and treats concerned citizens with malice and disrespect. Where are people with contaminated wells supposed to go if they can't take their complaint to the committee tasked with halting and reversing the pollution of the county's water supply? For those who don't know, a large number of the For those who don't know, a large number of the complaints against Mr. Peterson were dismissed because the Exec Ops Committee claimed that there were insufficient facts to support a violation. The only reason they could make this claim is because the committee refused to consider any of the evidence that was included in the complaints. They could have chosen to conduct a hearing and let both sides make their case, but they didn't. They could have reviewed and supported documents and videos attached to the complaints themselves, but they chose not to. I wonder why? Who or what are they protecting? How do you conduct an investigation without considering any of the evidence? Had they considered the evidence, I can assure you they would have found the facts supporting the allegations and at least a few more violations. Despite ignoring the evidence, they still found 28 violations of the Code of Conduct. These are the violations that can't be ignored. Interrupting speakers during public comment, disrespecting the public, disrespecting county staff, personal attacks on the public, misleading the public, and the elephant in the room, harassment of the female water resource specialist, not only in committee meetings. Mr. Peterson even took the time to drive out to a job site to make sure that she wasn't sunbathing. How can you completely ignore this type of behavior? I find the recommendations in this resolution to be totally laughable and inappropriate relative to the violations. They don't address the bias, the hostility, or the harassment. It's time to send a message that this type of behavior is unacceptable and won't be tolerated by this supervisor or any other county employee. Thank you.
Ray Reeser, and then John Bertelson.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Hello, board. Most of you know me. I'm Ray Reeser. I'm the supervisor for the Town of New Hope. I'm going to speak a little bit to Number 10. Many people have already. I think you're probably starting to get an idea that there's some serious problems with the way this was addressed. Let me go over some facts. The Executive Operations Committee Plus Two recently found that a sitting supervisor and committee chair has failed to serve with dignity and respect, receive input or explain his actions, failed to promote consistency, fairness, and nondiscrimination in county decision-making, failed to refrain from participating in negative activity and communication, and refrained from personal attacks against county officials, staff, county board supervisors, committee and board members, the public, and all other persons. Additionally, the Executive Operations Committee Plus Two found this supervisor's actions and hostile suggestions to the county water resource specialist Jen McNally violated the Code of Conduct. This supervisor's actions and comments directed towards the water quality specialist also lacked dignity and respect, again violating the Code of Conduct. These are serious charges. This is not a trivial matter, especially the ongoing harassment behavior exhibited towards county staff. Please remember, when you consider this resolution tonight, Executive Ops has found that these occurred. Let's be really clear here. The Wisconsin Fair Employment Law and State Statute 111.31 protects workers from harassment in the workplace. As a county, we have just failed Jen McNally. When I read all the listed charges, I fully expected the Executive Operations Plus Two would forward the recommendations to larger board that would address the violations that they found. Instead, they have recommended that this sitting supervisor and committee chair be asked to adhere to the Portage County Code of Conduct and watch several online videos on the basics of running an efficient and effective meeting? Of course, running an effective meeting is a useful skill, but how does this remotely address the serious findings of failing to serve with dignity and respect, failing to receive input or explain actions, failing to promote consistency, fairness, and nondiscrimination, and maybe most importantly, failing to treat county officials and staff, county board supervisors, committee and board members, the public, and all other persons with patience, courtesy, civility, and respect? We have now lost our Portage County Water Resource Specialist Jen McNally, an extremely experienced and dedicated county staff member, directly because of these charges. She commented when she left that the years of ongoing harassment and no signs of it being addressed at the county level contributed to her leaving. Pay attention to that comment when she left. I respectfully urge the county board to send these recommendations back to committee or amend the resolution until meaningful recommendations that actually address the seriousness of the issues at hand are dealt with. At minimum, this individual should be removed as chair of the Land and Water Conservation Committee.
Please wrap it up, Ray.
He should also be immediately required to complete the Wisconsin sexual harassment training. Thank you very much.
John Bertelson, and then Beth Jansen.
John Bertelson, 3300 Arbor Way Lane, Plover, Wisconsin, 715-347-1874. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, for moving up the airport and the young people, the awards, and Executive Pavelski for the words that he said, too. Young people are our future. And I signed up for three items. I'm assuming I get three minutes to cover all three items, right, Mr. Chair? It's fine. Now, the words I use and where I go from here strictly my own. I just want that to be clear. But I want to address accountability today, because for item number 10, I do not see a lot of good accountability. And another area for accountability, my friend Bob and I sat through the drug treatment court today, and he still has a hard time hearing, even though Judge Baker said several times for people to speak up. And I know I've brought this up before to Executive Pavelski. There's still issues here and in the annex building and the meeting rooms, and I highly suggest that you go with T-loop technology when you're looking at upgrading the buildings. Again, accountability. Bob has a hard time hearing. Now regarding Chairman Peterson, I watched the Land and Water meetings very carefully since April of 2022. A lot of people know that about me. So I saw this develop for quite a while, and I was very disappointed in Exec Ops with the punishment they came up with, because what good is a Code of Conduct when there's no consequences? Accountability. I'm very interested to see how the debate goes tonight when you get to Agenda Item 10, Mr. Chair, because the Code of Conduct is important, rules are important, but if you're not going to lay out a punishment for those rules, what good is the Code of I'll just leave it at that, and let's see where this goes tonight among the rest of the supervisors. The leadership was already weighed in, and everyone, I believe, thought the punishment was appropriate. But after two years of chairing the meeting to finally watch some videos how to run a meeting, I just don't quite get it. And to read the rule that he violated as part of his punishment, too, Mr. Chair, come on. Thank you for listening, and we'll see how this goes.
Beth Jansen, and then Paul Klein.
Hello, my name is Beth Jansen. I live in the Town of New Hope. Thirty years ago, we found we had atrazine in our well. This is very important. It's a chemical. We need a strong land and water conservation group. We can't be monkeying around with people that are not, don't have good leadership qualities. It's the health of our children and our people. This is not a frivolous problem. I implore you to look at what was recommended and reject it. We need good leadership. The health of your neighbors depends on this committee. And if you want that in your heart, then you better think about what this committee is doing. Thank you for your time.
Paul Klein, and then Kristi Greening.
Thank you for this opportunity to share, as good government needs to do more often. My name is Paul Klein. I'm here to hopefully make for a better community or speak for it. I speak here largely to Agenda Number 10, which includes the recommendations of the Exec Ops Committee regarding the dozens of Code of Conduct violations filed against Supervisor David Peterson. As we know, David Peterson is the chair of the LawCon Committee, the Land and Water Conservation Committee. According to state statutes, the committee is responsible to reverse the depletion of the state's soil resources and pollution of its waters. We are expecting actions, not more kicking the can down the road. The LawCon Committee is failing in its job. It's not working for the common good of all people. It seems to be working for the special interests of a few people. LawCon is chaired by David Peterson, who has failed as a leader. It's time for his removal from this committee. He has harassed professionals who don't subscribe to his bias, in particular Jen McNally, who has recently resigned, in part because of Dave Peterson's hostile behavior. His unprofessional comments, including sexual harassment, yes, have been witnessed and documented by others. He has attempted to squash scientific data from water experts. He has promoted false information on water issues and then called it out. He has led, and then, and then when he is called out, he has had public temper tantrums. Watch the videos. They are public evidence of someone out of his league. Watching anger issue and how to run a meeting videos as recommended by the Exec Ops Committee, it might help, but they're obviously not the solution. David Peterson has stated that agriculture is his livelihood, and he was elected to defend it. I would say that we are not anti-ag. I can live side by side with farmers. I do live side by side with farmers, but we need smart, healthy farming that does not harm our shared resources. Yesterday, I bought produce raised by local farmers, farmers bordering District 25, the district that Dave Peterson is supposed to be representing. I paid a little more for this food, but I know that the farmers are not harming our groundwater. They respect the earth and the community that lives here. They're careful not to add excess nitrogen and harmful chemicals to our soils and groundwater. Spending millions and millions of taxpayer dollars on nitrate removal systems is a losing battle and fiscally irresponsible. Better farming practices are the solution. We know that.
Sir, please wrap it up.
We also know that building bigger and bigger jails is a losing battle and fiscally irresponsible if we are not proactive, if we don't invest in prevention. I know that we need a better jail facility, but do it with citizen input.
Sir, please wrap it up.
An open discussion. Listen to the people. Thank you.
Kristi Greening, and then Andrea Olson.
Thank you. I appreciate the opportunity to speak here tonight. I'll be speaking on Agenda Item Number 10. I am focusing my comments on the most important piece missing from the recommendations, which is the complete disregard for corrective actions regarding ongoing harassment of your now former water resource specialist Jennifer McNally. Supervisor Peterson was found to have violated Code of Conduct in his treatment of Ms. McNally. I have heard numerous of you supervisors admit that his comments and actions directed toward her were inappropriate. I am here to challenge that term "inappropriate." I have personally been witness to having watched numerous videos and in meetings where Ms. McNally had been the target of derogatory and condescending comments from acting supervisors, and this county has done nothing. She has literally been verbally attacked during committee meetings in front of her peers and in front of the public attendees, and this county has done nothing. These attacks and the severity of them go far beyond being deemed as inappropriate. Aside from witnessing the harassments personally during public meetings, I was there the day Supervisor Peterson showed up at Jen McNally's job site and commented on her doing her job and not sunbathing. Let's make something perfectly clear. The comment made by Supervisor Peterson was not shared between two close friends. They are not even close acquaintances. It was made by somebody who has repeatedly belittled her in public and in meetings. It was not an icebreaker, as he downplays in his rebuttal to his allegations. The distress and discomfort followed by the interaction was clear and evident in Ms. McNally's appearance and her demeanor. The interaction was not simply inappropriate, it was harassment. It was reported to the county, and the county did nothing. What it was, ladies and gentlemen, was demeaning. It was demeaning to her as a professional. It was degrading to her as a female, and it was demoralizing and humiliating to her as a human being, and the county continued to do nothing. Inappropriate does not even minutely cover or represent the constant, ongoing harassment Ms. McNally has endured while employed by Portage County. Chairman Haga, you knew of multiple instances of harassment. Executive Pavelski was fully aware of complaints, as was Corp Counsel. Human Resources has a file regarding supervisors' behavior of harassment, and nothing has been done. And yet, here we are today with recommendations from Exec Ops led by Chair Haga to do what? Where is it in the recommendations that shows that harassment is going to be addressed in this county? It is your responsibility as county supervisors to hold yourself and your colleagues to a standard of professional and ethical conduct. Modification and amendments are needed to these recommendations to address the harassment. So when you reach Agenda Item Number 10 tonight, there should be an abundance of conversation.
Please wrap it up.
Citizens should not hear the deafening silence we heard at the Exec Ops Committee when the recommendation passed unanimously without a word in under 10 seconds.
Ma'am.
Your continued silence is your acceptance of what is happening here in Portage County. It is not just inappropriate, it is deplorable, and it is unacceptable.
Andrea Olson.
Andrea Olson, I'm going to briefly touch on Number 10. I, I hope that the county is ready for a lawsuit, because pretty much, you guys saying to watch videos, that's what should have been done when these things started to happen back in June. Now watching videos, that's just a joke, and it's going to be, probably be a lawsuit because nothing is happening. He should be removed from his seat or resign. But why isn't he doing either of those? Because his vote is wanted on other topics. Number 17, then. It takes a lot of class with high ethical standards when an elected position becomes vacant to appoint somebody with similar views as a person that was left. The citizens elected that person for a reason, for what they stood for. That has not happened with this board. Individuals were appointed to open supervisor positions that support their goals of the county executive and the board chair. Now the board has the votes to pass this land purchase and possibly try to build or pass the finances for building a new jail in a few weeks, right before an election. Is this right or ethical? Spending $1.5 million on farmland after spending, remember, $1.9 million in 2014 to purchase a building to raise for a new jail downtown? That is $2.5 million today. Do you think the- Do you think the county can sell that land or building for even a fraction of what they paid? No, it will cost less for somebody to build new. Changing the use of that building from offices to anything else will require it coming up to current code, meaning millions of dollars of renovations. So was that fiscally responsible if you buy this new land too, when you don't even want to put the money towards a healthcare center? Do remember also, in 2001, the county adopted a resolution for requiring any future jail project to be physically connected to the court's court-related offices and the sheriff's office. This resolution will be revisited probably in 10 years as a justification to move the county offices and buildings out towards the edge of town over into Plover. Now, also, it was unsafe to be walking people across the street, but how safe is it now to have somebody get in and out of a vehicle four times to travel 13 miles across town to be seen in jail? However, then Sheriff Lucas was told that lots of prisoners now have virtual court... Wait, so crossing the street doesn't happen that often? Sheriff Lucas also stated that release times can be changed. And why haven't they already been changed? Because right now, you have people that are being released at bad times. One mile away from here is my house. I had somebody in my car, had to call the cops multiple times. That person was released three times. He had transportation called his feet. So transportation can also be feet.
Please wrap it up.
We should be voting on a location. This should be left up to the public to vote on a location and the associated costs that are going to be required of those locations. Pover is going to need to do probably a full-time fire department.
Please wrap it up.
New municipal center, and countless other expenses. Those things need to be considered before moving this to any other location.
That's it.
That's it. Number two, correspondence.
We have Office of Portage County Clerk out of county resolutions.
Number five, approval of January 16, 2024 minutes. Motion by Supervisor Dubek. Seconded by Supervisor Lattic. Discussion, corrections, changes. All those in favor with aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. Number six, confirmation of the following individuals to act as authorized emergency fire wardens for the prevention and the suppression of forest fires in Portage County for the 2024 calendar year as printed. Motion by Supervisor Jankowski, seconded by Supervisor Maresi. Discussion. There's no discussion. All those in favor with aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Number seven, appointment of Steve Fritz to the MacDill Land, Inland Water Protection and Rehabilitation District for the remainder of the term, expiring April 15, 2024. Motion by Supervisor Lattic. Don't be shy, guys. We're going to be here a long time. Motion by Supervisor, seconded by Supervisor Splinter. Discussion. Supervisor Maresi.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I know the answer to the question of why he's being appointed to this committee, because he's a member of the Land and Water Conservation Committee. However, Supervisor Fritz's district does not touch the MacDill area. There are three other supervisors that do. It's the sixth district, the seventh, and I believe the eighth, or sorry, the ninth. And I feel like those would be very much more appropriate members to have appointed to that committee. I realize that none of them are on the Land and Water Conservation Committee, but their constituents live on that water, body of water. So appointing someone that's four districts away seems like an irresponsible decision because they have literally no stake in it. They don't hear from their constituents about it. We have three other supervisors that could be a part of it, and this should probably be evaluated as we consider, you know, making appointments to that Land and Water Conservation Committee.
So as I understand it, this is one of the subcommittees that's within the Land and Water Committee, and it has to be one of the members of the Land and Water Committee? Is that correct?
That's correct.
And what are you looking for?
Well, I'm just pointing out that we're appointing people that are not part of that community of people. We have Supervisor Sobilski that lives within District 6, which touches the MacDill area. We have Supervisor Rockman, who also lives in that area. We have Supervisor Lattic, who also lives in that area, and they represent the people who live along that body of water. And it just seems way more appropriate to have that there. I realize statutorily or ordinance-wise, we cannot prevent this from happening, and it is up to the county executive to appoint that position, I believe, or is this yours?
For...
It's the execs, yes. I'm sorry, I have to look at my... So I guess unless the executive wants to reconsider this appointment, I know this is falling, you know, there's nothing we can do ordinance-wise. I'm just bringing up the inconsistency again of our county government and ordinance and policies.
Yeah, this is going to be about 35 days, and it expires, something like that, because it's... But I don't know if they'll even have a meeting between now and then. Supervisor Matt Jakowski.
Mr. Chair, if we're looking at that as we move forward here with committees, we also have people from the City of Stevens Point on the Planning and Zoning Committee, which the planning and zoning of Portage County has nothing to do with any village that has village powers and has their own zoning. So we have to look at the whole picture on this as we move forward.
Yes, I think a lot of our appointments are complicated enough with what we have and the number of committees we have, and we can try and be conscious to those, but trying to fit those. And I think we've got some things later on where we're actually trying to loosen that up for that same very, that very same reason, because of the difficulty that we find in trying to fulfill some of those positions. Any other comments? There's no other comments? I have a motion and a second. All those in favor, all those in favor with aye?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Supervisor Maresi, opposed?
Correct.
Motion carries. Number eight, appointment of Thurvin Hanson to the Veterans Service Commission for a three-year term expiring December 14, 2026. Take a motion. Motion by Supervisor Pataki, seconded by Supervisor Rockman. Discussion. There's no further discussion. All those in favor with aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Appointment of David Zip...
Heminis.
Was it?
Heminis.
Heminis?
Heminis.
To the Local Emergency Planning Committee for a four-year term expiring April 17, 2028. Motion by Supervisor Jankowski, seconded by Supervisor Keller. Discussion. No further discussion. All those in favor with aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Number 10, approving and adopting the recommendation of Executive Operations Committee regarding the code of conduct complaint filed against Supervisor Dave Peterson.
This is Resolution 207-2022-2024 submitted by the Executive Operations Committee.
Motion by Supervisor Honnell.
No, that's not a motion, sir. It's a request to speak.
I have to get it on the floor first. I thought you were raising your hand to be recognized for the motion. So I need a motion to get it on the floor for discussion. Motion by Supervisor Barry Jakowski, seconded by Supervisor Lattic. Discussion. Supervisor Honnell.
Thank you. Thank you. The process used to develop this resolution has been flawed since the beginning, and for those reasons, I'm going to be abstaining. Citizen complaints, lost, delayed, ignored, year after year, these are our customers, and appointments of four newly-elected supervisors to this committee in 2022 and one other appointee ineligible to chair, and now inexperience is being cited as a reason for poor chair conduct. What was expected? Committee appointments to LawCon heavily biased towards supervisors from primarily agricultural districts, the challenging of water specialist experts presenting scientifically sound evidence and refusing to correct misinformation. Executive Operations plus two, limiting the consideration of types of evidence considered, was it to avoid a hearing? Knowledge and evidence of harassment of citizens and county staff allowed to continue year after year, creating a hostile work environment with little evidence that it would change for the better. How will we ever attract and keep competent county employees when we establish this kind of behavior and approve it? Finally, despite the gravity of the complaints involving citizens and staff, the requirements of attending a few webinars with no follow-up is just really unacceptable. This process has been so poorly executed, I can't vote for it or against it. I simply have to abstain, and by that, just repudiate the entire process. Thank you for your time.
Supervisor Oki, you've got your hand up.
Yes, thank you, Chair Haga. And yes, so I move to amend this resolution by striking words which are soft and ambiguous and adding words that act to prevent violations, and we know the violations are confirmed from happening again. So the examples that I can use at this point speak to words like "should be directed to adhere to Portage County Code of Conduct." Those words should be required, because they are, we're required to adhere to those. Words like "should be directed" or "should be ordered," "should be ordered," those words, better put as "is ordered." Words like...
We need a clear motion.
Oh, I heard whispering, so do I... You need it? I'm sorry? No? Should I keep going?
Continue.
Okay. And words like, I think that haven't even been touched on, but words like Supervisor Peterson is required to complete an anti-harassment training, or government ethics, or personal, seek personal counseling, would all be very, would be much more effective in this resolution than the soft words that have been chosen. Words like "should" and "shall," actually grammatically, "shall" doesn't even belong in here. And that is the motion, the amendment I offer.
I'm unsure of this amendment because of its broadness.
That's why we chose words. I chose the word, I chose words plural.
Yeah, usually if there's an amendment as to words, you're striking specific words and then inserting specific words.
Correct.
Well, I think I offered that.
Unless she wants to restate it.
You want me to restate it?
Yes, please.
Okay. Words such as "directed to adhere" change to "required to adhere." Words that are, should be, shall, are, is ordered. Words like, let's see, recommend or will be...
So I'm going to require you, Suzanne, to be more specific, because you're...
Which provisions?
Okay. Then I'm going to backtrack this amendment if I can, and I'll take it off the table and come back with another one. Can I do that?
So you're withdrawing your First Amendment?
I will withdraw this First Amendment.
Very good. You have something else to add?
I do. I think this resolution should be redirected to the committee to develop a more precise and action-oriented resolution, one that holds the violator accountable for actions taken, one that looks for outcomes that can be measured by timelines and behavior change.
Is that an amendment? Ma'am?
Yes. Yes.
Do I have a second?
I will second that.
Send it back.
So the amendment is to send it back to the committee? Is that correct?
Yes. Yes.
And I have a second by Supervisor Maresi. Discussion on the amendment. Supervisor Matt Jakowski, then Supervisor Splinter.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'll be voting no on the amendment for the fact that it's time we call this what it is, a political agenda. All the individuals that filed complaints, Lisa Anderson, Ray Reiser, George Kraft, all actively campaigned against Mr. Peterson back in 2022. If you look at Mr. Peterson's nomination papers, you can see that they're signed by the Andersons and the Walkers. That's no coincidence. In January of '07, 2022, an email from Lisa Anderson to Mr. Kraft and Mr. Reiser states, oh, excuse me, an email from, excuse me, in a January '07, a 2022 email from Lisa Anderson to Mr. Kraft and Mr. Reiser, George Kraft states in his reply, "Game on." They were against Mr. Peterson before his nomination papers were even official. Mr. Reiser even questioned Mr. Peterson's residence. Lisa Anderson, Ray Reiser, and George Kraft are included in an email chain from May 19, 2021, that states, "A constituent should harass Supervisor Matt Jakowski." Supervisor Matt Jakowski. Then Supervisor Reiser did nothing about this email, did not reply, hence condoning this type of behavior. But that type of behavior is typical of Ray Reiser. While Mr. Reiser was a supervisor, he stood up and shouted across the room and threatened a fellow supervisor at the February 2, 2022 Highway Committee meeting. Supervisor Lattic, Supervisor Pataki, SOIC, Commissioner Check, along with 20-plus other employees of the Highway Department were present at this meeting. No complaint was filed, because I understand that being a supervisor can sometimes be emotional. Mr. Reiser also shouted and threatened me at a September 6, 2022 Executive Operations Meeting Committee meeting. He yelled and pointed at me, saying, "How dare I request his UWSP emails, an email address he was clearly using for county business," which makes him available for open records, a process Mr. Reiser and his comrades should be crystal clear on by this point. Again, no complaint regarding his uncouth conduct was filed, because I understand when you're a public servant, it comes with the job. In April 21, in an April 21, 2021 email, George Kraft and then Supervisor Reiser refer to two supervisors as the Butt-Head Brothers, a clear violation of the code of conduct. In the same email chain, George Kraft uses the F-word when referring to Vice Chair Rakowski. These more than surpass the types of behaviors they mentioned in their complaints. At a recent meeting, Lisa Anderson has made the statement that the rate of miscarriages in Nelsonville is higher than anywhere else in the county. When asked about this by county staff, Mrs. Anderson revealed that this was an opinion with no scientific data to back up her claim, and was very rude to staff that asked for the clarification. If Mrs. Anderson cannot tell opinion from fact, how can we rely on her complaint? Along those same lines, at the February 6, 2024 Special Executive Ops Meeting, in a response to the recent resignation of county water specialist Jen McNally, George Kraft stated, "You would have heard from HR that there are complaints sitting in their files about how county supervisors have treated Jen." Tonight, Ms. Greening also testified to this. On February 14, I met with HR Director Bellinger Test, and she said there have been no complaints or files in the Portage County HR office against any county supervisors. Dr. Kraft has fabricated this story to slander Mr. Peterson and validate his complaint. I have to ask myself, how much of Mr. Kraft's complaint has been fabricated in the same manner? There is nothing in Ms. McNally's resignation letter that says anything about harassment or a hostile work environment. I realize none of us are perfect, but Supervisor Peterson was placed in a very difficult situation, and he did the best he could. In his time as chairman on the LawCon Committee, he has done more than most to help understand and remedy the problem of nitrates in water. He started, he worked with staff and the executives to start a reimbursement program for reverse osmosis systems, a monitoring well network's been put in, and comprehensive testing of private wells to better understand the situation. Those have all been created under Chair Peterson's leadership. I think the complainants are jealous of what Supervisor Peterson could accomplish as chair. I believe they had a political agenda and were in search of an opportunity, and in effect, were instigators in some of the situations. Thank you.
Supervisor Splinter, then Supervisor Sobilski.
I had no prepared remarks tonight. I listened... I listened quite intently to all the people. I am on the Land and Water Committee. I don't have an ag background, so I'm kind of a, I've attended all 23 meetings so far, perfect attendance. I've seen the outbursts of the chair, I've seen the outbursts of the public sometimes. And I don't know, sometimes one feeds on the other. Every meeting I go to, went to, I'm just, I was afraid of what would come out of somebody else's mouth in that, in that meeting. And while there were many times where a chair, a chairman that didn't have experience was kind of pushed to the limit, what pushed me over the edge was when he attacked Jen McNally in a public meeting of the Land and Water Committee. I went up to Jen afterwards and I profusely apologized for that because I, no one should be dressed down in front of the public, ever. It should be handled in private. But his, Dave's harassment of her on the, on the job site, it just, that to me was not worthy of someone to be chair of the committee. And I would ask one of two things. I would ask Dave, if you want to-
Mike, address the comments to the chair, please.
Okay, sorry. I would ask, I would ask Mr. Peterson to voluntarily step down tonight as chairman of the Land and Water Committee. And if, and if he doesn't do that, I would expect somebody on the Exec Ops Committee to call for an amendment to that consequence. Actions have consequences. We just, it just cannot, it cannot be, it cannot be endorsed. We, we've gotta have a high standard. We can't be emotional in, in chairing meetings. We have, we have to, we have to look at the facts, listen to all, all sides of the issues and, and not have a bias. But to harass somebody, that just went over the edge. So Dave, I'm not addressing you directly, but I would say Mr. Peterson should voluntarily resign tonight or if no one else does, that he should, that he should be stepped, he should step down from chair as a person. There's gotta be a consequence to actions. Thank you.
Supervisor Shabelsky.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I was actually raising my hand earlier to, with a point of order, but I didn't want to get run over by a freight train. So, my question was to the-
Use the mic, please.
Oh, sorry. Normally figure I'm loud enough. My, my question is to the order of the motions right now because we had a motion on the floor to accept the resolution and then an amendment to send it back to committee. So does the original motion have to be voted down for that to happen?
So the amendment would supersede the, the first one?
Okay. That's correct. Okay. So for now-
Testing me, aren't you?
Yeah, well, that's exactly why.
So, somebody else over here, Supervisor Dubek?
My question would be, what's the timeline for this, the last whereas? And how do we, what proof has to be done to see if these webinars were watched? Does he have to write a paper about them? Is there a quiz after them? Is he gonna do a presentation about them?
Are you asking me or the body or anybody?
I'm asking the Exec Ops Committee, it's not in there.
Point of order, Mr. Chair. We need to be discussing the amendment at this point in time and the amendment only. If you want to call the question on the amendment, we can get back to the overall motion and what to do with it. But we are at, the amendment is on the floor and the question should be, or the discussion should be on the amendment at this point in time.
And I will agree with Supervisor Soik to some point because otherwise I'm worried we're gonna start stacking amendments and we're not dispensing them. Supervisor Dubek, do you understand, is that clear? Okay.
Yes, so yeah. We sent it back, that's why I'd like that in there.
If, if after that amendment is voted on, if you'd like to bring it up or call on again, then it would be acceptable. But I- Somebody else had their hand up? Supervisor Gifford?
The amendment we're voting on is to send this back to committee for further work, right? So I will speak to that and why I will vote in favor of sending it back.
Right. And that's what we're, we're probably looking for is the input for that executive ops because it comes back to the committee, but it's not an amendment, Mr. Dubek, Supervisor Dubek, it's a suggestion for that committee to consider. Something to clear up, so, okay?
Can I use my four and a half minutes up there or less?
Go ahead.
Okay, now, you know, I was on Land and Water Committee for two terms, that's four years. And I, I was impressed when I got on that committee because I think in my worldview, I've, I've been an environmentalist since 1970, Earth Day number one. That work of that committee is critical to making this a sustainable county, as the lingo goes these days. And really, there's nothing more important than the relationship of communities to the land and the water and of course, the air that we breathe. And I was surprised as I sat through those two terms that the, what I would call adversarial relationship that had developed between this governing body and the, particularly the residents of Nelsonville. You know, I didn't see that kind of adversarial relationship in some of the other subcommittees that I had on Land and Water. I thought founders of Mill Creek were doing really a good job and I, I appreciated the Lake Districts and the work that they do. But when it came to the Nelsonville question, again, I was a shock that there was such a adversarial attitude between public citizen and government. And as I said several meetings back in the fall, my hope is that what comes out of this pro, this whole process is a much better communication and relationship between the citizens in the county and the elected officials, the government in the county. And so that's why I think this should go back to committee for a whole lot more work and study on the issues that all of our public speakers have raised tonight. You know, and I get all the emails from all of the folks involved in the Nelsonville situation and I tend to try to reply to all of them. And I, I think I'm kind of tending toward the, the views that were expressed by the public tonight. So hopefully, when it goes back to committee, if it vote goes that way, a lot more work will be done on the wording of this and, and the, as Supervisor Oki suggests, the wording of strengthening the, the Code of Conduct and what's expected of us in that. Thank you.
Anybody else? Supervisor Lattick?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just wanna, I have no problem taking it back to the committee, but we all have to realize that-
Supervisor, please sit closer to the mic.
We have to realize that there's an election here on April 2nd. It's not February 20th. It goes back a minute, that's a month, then try and get it re-approved again, that's another month, we're gonna be past the election. Supervisor Peterson does have competition with, with former Supervisor Ray Reiser. So depending on who wins that election, this may all be a moot point by that time. If, if one doesn't make it in reelection, we have no power to have him do anything. So I recommend that we get this done tonight and get it behind us.
Anybody else? So, I will remind everybody that the Code of Conduct was, a lot of us were a big part of that and was a result of calls, emails to me as chair to try and resolve the issues, fix the issues. And as we all know, these are elected officials and there's not much that can happen to an elected official. My authority as chair is limited and I had stated that I didn't have anything in my toolbox to be able to do that. So I worked with our then corp counsel to try and create a Code of Conduct. Is it perfect? No. Does it need work? Yes. Can we change it while we're in the middle of it? No. We have to finish and follow through until it's been resolved. Once it's resolved, I know full well that there are many things that will be brought before this body to decide. I know that a big part of the confusion is the public's not fully understanding how government works or the restrictions or the limits of government, which is, is evident by all of the items that I as chair get accused of. I think I heard all, the chair has, as recommended by Chair Haga. I didn't recommend anything. I'm, I don't recommend the chair to a committee. The county board has, or as, as the chair, I have no authority over the staff. I have, that falls under the powers and the authorities of the executive. I am only responsible for the folks that are, are here in the room tonight. And all of us that were here in the past, were the ones that voted on the Code of Conduct for the most part and can remember the discussions we had. And I think there's probably a lot of newer supervisors that once they've got into the politic part of it, started to find some of the things that they, and see some of the items in county government that get a little clunky and a little goofy and hard to understand. Things with minutes. Why is public input not in there? It's, it's not an action item. Robert's Rules of Order and other things are, all call those items out. And again, the public's not aware of those things, so they perceive them as being, not being transparent, not showing things that are going forward. And that's, that's incorrect. So Supervisor Dodge?
I guess I'm inclined to vote for the amendment because it gets us off the hook for tonight. Very much what Dave Lattick has said is very true. The people of District 25 will be voting in a couple of weeks. They will choose their representative. If this Code of Conduct is on record and Mr. Peterson is not reelected, then what have we done? Can somebody explain that to me? So I'm almost feeling like send it back to committee. There is not time enough to come back to the board with a different result. So to me, we want to send all of the issues that we discussed to the public and go to referendum and hear what the people have to say. And I guess this is one that I agree with. The people of District 25 will make the decision.
One other comment of items that was brought up and it's important to clarify was the discussion about harassment and what is being done and, and making sure that we communicate that. If all of you board members remember, in our January meeting, we had a Code of Con, or I'm sorry, harassment document, a sign that shows that you have read and understand and been trained on harassment. I know we either have, all of the staff is either has or is soon will be trained in harassment. I know that myself and Executive Pavelsky and some of the other staff here have sat in the class and then had to sit an additional half hour afterwards for the directors to be trained in harassment. And when you folks finished that, you signed that and turned that in, that you have reviewed the harassment. So to say we have done nothing is incorrect as well. Supervisor Barry Jakowski?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Let's be very clear here. Has there been any harassment allegations made by Ms. McNally?
I have no idea.
May I ask that of corp counsel and/or HR?
Laura, are you on?
We need to be, we need to be very clear on this.
Laura, are you on? Is Laura on? Is anybody else? Oh, there she is.
There has not been a harassment claim submitted by Ms. McNally.
Thank you, Laura. So we need to be very clear on this before we're talking about and, and making allegations of Supervisor Peterson.
Is that it? Supervisor Oki?
Oh, I'm, I'm sorry, I, I retracted that, I think.
Thank you. Supervisor Peterson?
Is this time to speak on amended number 10?
Send it back to the amendment, to send it back to the committee.
Because I want to speak before it goes on, on to approving or adopting.
Uh, is it gonna, Dave? I would say that, I mean, the discussion here is on the, the motion to refer, the motion in the second to send it back to the committee. That's, that's the topic of discussion.
Then I'll refrain at this time.
Any other discussion on sending it back to the committee? Supervisor Rockman?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I, I just want to respond briefly to some of the questions I heard. For the most part, as far as I understand it, we're not actually here to adjudicate his innocence or guilt, sorry, Supervisor Peterson's innocence or guilt. We're, we're here to decide whether or not what we think Exec Ops Plus Two decided was fair. And again, I'm summating here. It was then amended and then suggested that it goes back to the committee. I'll be abstaining from all these votes as well because I don't believe that this process was done right from the start. However, it's worth mentioning what would be the point if we were to send it back and it then wouldn't get really any action before, say, the next election cycle. I would say that it would make an all kinds of difference because, as you said, you can't really do it while you're in it. You have to get clear of it. If, for some bureaucratic reason, which is what government is, this doesn't get settled and Supervisor Peterson doesn't get elected, it's not a moot point. It's still something that happened, it's still something that came to the county's attention and it's still an actionable item, which means it can then be used to engender a conversation about how it is we go about dealing with Code of Conduct violations and the potential resolutions, the potential actions, the potential protocols. I've heard it mentioned that, is it perfect? No. Does it need work? Yes. This would be a way to get that work done in a way that is proper in accordance to protocol as I understand it. I'm not particularly happy with the way this whole thing is playing out. So again, I'll be abstaining, but I just wanted to state for those who think that it would be irrelevant at this point, that elections don't change consequences. A thing still happened, people still had complaints, they were verified, they went through the proper channels to get them verified, to get them heard and to get them in front of us for attention. So they're getting their day one way or another. And I think that's the important takeaway. That's what makes it worth it. That's all.
So to, to be clear, you know, and I have, and I'm gonna look for corp counsel to, for clarification or online, but when Executive Ops Plus Two gets back together to come up with the recommendations and, from other supervisors or, about what is the acceptable correction for this? And it's interesting, I hadn't gotten any phone calls or anything on this from any supervisors to talk about it, but, but if to have him- on this from any supervisors to talk about it, but, but if to have him removed from the Chair's position, I believe that trips that into a hearing.
Correct. That is correct. That would require a hearing at Exec Ops Plus Two. So referring back, that that would go into a hearing posture.
So I want to be clear, that everybody understands that, and that is one of the wonky things that I talked about in government, and I'm sure that a lot of people won't understand that, but I'm trying to explain it now, so it's clear and there's no misunderstanding. Anybody else on the amendment? Supervisor Dodge.
I just have a question. I noticed that virtually everyone has referred to Executive Ops Plus Two. Is that not legitimately the Ethics Committee? And why are we not using the proper language?
The Ethics Committee was dissolved by this body, and the, and that's one of the things that is not perfect with the creation of this, was the Plus Two. And it is, in fact, on the list to have a name for it because it doesn't have one. And the thought process, and when we dissolved the Ethics Committee, was that any issue that rises to the point to be important enough, that it should be in front of the body that is elected by this body, not just five supervisors, was the rationale for it at the time. So, and then the compromise, and I believe it was Supervisor Maresi, that asked for it at that time, to have two citizens members. That's where the Plus Two comes in. So on the list of things to fix or correct, is to give it a name so that going forward, we don't have to call it Executive Ops Plus Two. It was one of the things that we didn't see until we got into it, so.
Well, and I guess my point is that gives it a political slant as well.
And it may very well come back with a Code of Conduct Ethics Committee. Maybe something has been tossed around, so. There's no other discussion on the amendment to send it back to the committee.
I can vote if you want.
Uh, we will do it electronic whenever you're ready. Tell me when you're ready.
Ready.
All those in favor of sending it back to the committee, vote yes and opposed no.
Supervisor Morrow?
Yes.
Supervisor Oki?
Yes.
Yes.
And Supervisor Sislevich?
No.
There's no option for abstaining, is there?
We're waiting on Supervisor Hemrick, Supervisor Honle, and Supervisor Dodge.
It's not recording.
You got it.
You're good. Supervisor Honle?
Right.
Yep, there we go. So it stays, oh, the motion was to send it back to committee, so it stays here. So, correct? That's a little goofy, but yeah. So, dealing with the motion as it was presented. Any further discussion? Supervisor Maresi.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I, I voted no on the amendment because, well, I wanted discussion on it, first of all. And I voted no because I don't have any hope for it going anywhere at Executive Operations. So I'll start with my dissertation here. Originally, I felt bad for Supervisor Peterson at the beginning of this term. He was a brand-new supervisor, no experience, no knowledge of process, no basic understanding of public speaking, and he was thrown into this by his friend Supervisor Barry Jakowski. Both Supervisors, Jakowski even got Peterson elected. They retained the signatures needed to secure his place on the ballot in 2022. Supervisor Peterson trusted them, so why not take a shot at leading the most contentious committee on Portage County's docket of committees? If you've taken time to review the videos of the meetings recorded by concerned citizens, former supervisors, in Portage County's very own video cameras, you'd see the evidence for yourself. But since those videos, recorded by Portage County, are not considered part of the official record or minutes, the Exec Ops Plus Two Committee was prevented from using them as evidence. This process has been disastrous and even an embarrassment to Portage County. Supervisor Peterson was set up to fail by his own friends. Supervisor Barry Jakowski attempted to hold his hand and tell him what to do during the meetings, but the public was not having it, considering Supervisor Jakowski's own failed tenure leading that committee. Chair Haga attempted to guide Supervisor Peterson, thank you Chair Haga, I give you kudos for that, by attending and sitting in on all meetings, or on a few meetings, but to no avail. There are even requests for Supervisor Peterson to step down as Chair of the Land and Water Conservation Committee. Unfortunately, Supervisor Peterson dug in his heels. It was at this point that I stopped feeling sorry for him. I was taught to, that when I do, when you do wrong, that you reflect on it and then you do better. And if that can, and if you cannot do better, then admit you're wrong, ask for forgiveness, and step out of the way of progress for the sake of integrity and civility. Digging in only leads to a wasteful and embarrassing situation like this. It wastes time, valuable taxpayer dollars, it leads to mistrust, it puts the committee, like the Executive Operations Plus Two, in a precarious place, and now we are questioning their competence and ability to make fair decisions. The Executive Ops Plus Two Committee and Corporation Counsel did not do their due diligence. They would not allow Portage County to use their very own video footage to be admissible as evidence. They disregarded Supervisor Peterson's comment, "I'm just making sure you're not sunbathing", to former water resource specialist Jen McNally as she worked in the field. This complaint of sexual harassment was brushed off as, "He was just making a joke" by one of the members of the Executive Operation Committee. They have reinforced a toxic work culture of harassment, bullying, and mistreatment of staff by elected officials as an acceptable behavior. Jen McNally has now quit her job with Portage County, citing this toxic culture amongst Portage County supervisors, namely three supervisors. More staff from the Planning and Zoning Department have personally told me that the department is on edge since Jen's departure, and some are considering leaving as well because of this toxic culture of micromanagement and harassment. Portage County retained outside counsel from our insurance carrier because the complaints were so egregious, thorough, and critical of Supervisor Peterson and how Chair Haga and Corporation Counsel were handling this, that they feared Supervisor Peterson would sue Portage County. Outside counsel was there to give advice to Exec Ops Plus Two about process and to protect Portage County, not actually to provide diligence and investigate these allegations of impropriety. Corporation Counsel and outside counsel were there to protect Portage County. They were not there to investigate. In defense of outside counsel, she did say if the committee wanted to hear from witnesses and to cross-examine, they would need to have a public hearing, as was referenced here earlier. Executive Ops never considered that option. Corp Counsel actually showed his bias via Double Standard during a December Exec Ops Plus Two meeting, allowing Supervisor Peterson to distribute a handout to the committee members for their consideration, thus violating Portage County Ordinance 3.1.48/7, stating that "All supporting documents or any action items on the agenda," also known as the packet of information, "must be received by membership no less than 24 hours prior to the meeting, either via U.S. mail or electronically, and must be published on the county's website for the public to access." This is a violation. And subsequently, Corporation Counsel prevented one of the five complainants, Lisa Anderson, from distributing her handout at the committee for their consideration at the January meeting. How is this fair that Corp Counsel and ex officio member of the committee be allowed to pick and choose when to follow the ordinance? Finally, let's consider this. Chair Haga and Corporation Counsel took five months to get us here to the full County Board meeting for this review. Our ordinance states that the Chair has 10 days or 20 days for good cause to address this situation. We're at five months. That's 150 days. 150 days so we can lose the best water quality specialist in the state of Wisconsin. 150 days for staff of an entire planning and zoning department and 500-plus other employees to see how Portage County's leadership is going to deal with harassment in the workplace by elected officials.
Please wrap it up Supervisor Maresi.
To tell us the best they can do is have Supervisor Peterson watch a few videos and not verify that he does it. He just ruined a person's life, a real person with family, heart, and community.
Supervisor Maresi, please wrap it up. Your time is up, sir.
As an act of protest, I will too abstain, like my colleagues, from voting on this because from the very beginning, this process was completely flawed, and it does not deserve a vote at all. So as protest, I will be abstaining as well. Thank you.
Supervisor Barry Jakowski.
Just to clarify once again, Mr. Chair, did I, I heard Supervisor Maresi refer to a harassment complaint again. Did I not hear Director Bellinger Test when she said there was no complaint of harassment? Did I, did I not hear correctly?
I believe that's what she said.
Thank you.
I also want to correct a few things that were misstated in there, and it's twisting and distorting things, especially with this, and I've heard it repeatedly, the 10 days. And it's 10 days from when I received a verified complaint from our Corporation Counsel instructing me to have the Executive Ops Plus Two because there may or may not be a finding of Code of Conduct violation, for me to have that committee together in 10 days. It does, and it doesn't say anything about resolving an issue in 10 days because that is incorrect and in fact, factually incorrect. And I would think next to impossible. The 10 days to get the committee together is one of the quickest things that happens in county government anyway, but to say that, or even assume that it's going to be resolved in 10 days is ridiculous. So, anybody else have any other comments? Supervisor Peterson.
Thank you Chair Haga and fellow members of the Board. I want to address the Code of Conduct resolution involving me tonight that we'll be voting on. First off, we should be looking at the videos of the meetings that the Portage County has taken, not of what the public videos are. I decided to run for the County Board because I wanted to serve the residents of our community. As a farmer, I know I had a perspective and experience that would be valuable in addressing issues unique to our rural area, especially water quality in Nelsonville. The voters agreed. My knowledge of agriculture and the attention I pay to our natural resources every day were the reasons I was nominated to be Chair of the Land and Water Conservation Committee. My two years in office have been a learning experience. I'm sure that I am not the only supervisor to find the early going challenging. And given the contentious nature of the water quality issue, I stepped into the center of a storm. There is a lot of passion and emotion about this issue, and I fully understand why. I don't fault anyone for pursuing, pushing for solutions. We all want drinking water to be clean and safe. Unfortunately, though, some of this passion and emotion has turned ugly. Name-calling, badgering the county conservationists, belittling committee members, threatening legal action, and disrupting meetings are all harmful. For anyone truly committed to water quality improvement, those things are also unproductive. Constant fighting will only slow down our progress in finding sound, science-based solutions to our water quality issues. I am proud to say that despite the challenges, the Land and Water Committee has been responsive and taken action. Under my direction, the committee pushed for reverse osmosis systems as a quick safeguard. We helped usher through state money to assist in replacing private wells. The committee voted unanimously to use $250,000 in federal ARP money to install monitoring wells. I proposed private testing wells, or I proposed testing private wells to try to get a more complete picture of the issue. And the farmer with land in what is considered the aquifer recharge area agreed to plant hundreds of acres of alfalfa to reduce the possibility of nitrate leaching. Also, I brought in a community, or a company representative, to talk about biological solutions to some of the nitrate use on crops. Unfortunately, that was dismissed out of hand, even though some area farms are using it with positive results. In terms of the Code of Conduct resolution, there have been a number of allegations leveled against me. Although I was preparing to address those point by point, I decided that would not be productive either at this point. I have admitted to making rookie mistakes in my Chair's role, and I realize I could use some training on ways to better manage contentious meetings. I think what the Executive Ops Committee has identified will be beneficial. I want you to know that I take my role on this Board and the committee seriously. We have very real issues to address, and I am fully committed to doing so in the most effective way. I also realize that the best water quality solutions will be, require broad cooperation and a willingness by everyone to listen to each other. Working together is how we will make further progress toward ensuring we have clean water for everyone. Thank you.
Anybody else?
Mr. Chair, I guess I would just like to, to point out that specifically in the Code of Conduct, under Ordinance 3.1.51, it says that the complaint process will follow the enforcement provisions under the Code of Ethics at 3.6.6. And under Sub 3, Sub A, that talks about a person, a supervisor who's subject to a Code of Conduct complaint, will receive notice of those complaints. It also says that the committee, the County Executive, or the Executive Operations Committee, will provide notice that the subject, in this case Supervisor Peterson, may file a written statement of his/her response to the complaint. It doesn't specify how that written response will be provided or filed, so I'm just advising, reiterating to the, to the Chair that Supervisor Peterson provided a written statement pursuant to that section of the ordinance.
It doesn't, it doesn't say when he has to provide it either.
Doesn't say when or how, so. It was my opinion, that was his ability to do so. And under our public comment ordinances, it's for providing written or oral comment and statements, but not providing handouts.
Another comment that comes to mind too, that was been brought up as our engaging, or having assistance from an outside lawyer, and as we had the first Executive Ops Plus Two, as I was walking out with Supervisor Maresi and Mr. Weaver and Officer Levandowski, I was instructed by Mr. Weaver, or Mr. Maresi that we, we have the potential to be sued. And when someone tells you that, or coming from another supervisor, should you not take that seriously and make sure that we are in a good position? Have the, make sure we're doing things accordingly to the law?
And there are, there are fair amount of cases and issues that the county deals with, claims and otherwise, where our insurance carrier assigns outside counsel. This is one of those circumstances.
So, any other discussion? I have a motion in a second. Are you ready? All those in favor, vote yes and opposed no.
Supervisor Morrow?
Abstained.
On the resolution?
Yeah, I think so.
Supervisor Oki?
No.
Supervisor Hakala?
Oh.
Supervisor Sislevich?
Just on clear, this is to send it back to committee? Is that correct?
No. No. This is to approve the resolution as stated.
Okay.
So what's your, what's your vote? Yes or no?
So approve the resolution to, as is, amend?
Yes, to, to accept the recommendations from Executive Ops Plus Two.
This would be yes, then.
Number 11, amending Portage County Code of Ordinance Section 3.1.22, entitling "Portage County Justice Coalition to Change the Membership Criteria for All Supervisor Members to At-Large."
This is Resolution 208-2022-2024, submitted by the Executive Operations Committee and Judicial General Government Committee.
I'll take a motion. Motion by Supervisor Keller, seconded by Supervisor Matt Jakowski. I'll take a motion. Motion by Supervisor Keller, seconded by Supervisor Matt Jakowski. I think we went through some of these other committees last month with some of these similar recommendations. So, if there's no further discussion, all those in favor with aye?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Number 12, Portage County Zoning Ordinance Map Amendment, Gosh.
This is Resolution 209-2022-2024, submitted by the Planning and Zoning Committee.
Motion by Supervisor Rakowski, seconded by Supervisor Dodge, discussion. If there's no further discussion, all those in favor with aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Number 13, Town of Buena Vista Comprehensive Plan Amending, Amendment and Portage County Zoning Ordinance Map Amendment, Ruby.
This is Resolution 210-2022-2024, submitted by the Planning and Zoning Committee.
Motion by Supervisor Matt Jakowski, seconded by Supervisor Rakowski, discussion. No further discussion, all those in favor with aye?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Number 14, Town of Amherst Comprehensive Plan Amendment and Portage County Zoning Map Amendment, Skavicki.
This is Resolution 211-2022-2024, submitted by the Planning and Zoning Committee.
Motion by Supervisor Keller, seconded by Supervisor Rakowski, discussion. There's no further discussion, all those in favor with aye?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Number 15, approving and authorizing the sale of county-owned property and dedicating road right-of-way in the city of Stevens Point.
This is Resolution 212-2022-2024, submitted by the Highway Committee.
Motion by Supervisor Lattic, seconded by Supervisor Pataki, discussion. No further discussion, all those in favor with aye?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Number 16, approving and authorizing a conservancy easement to the Wisconsin Department of Natural Resources for the Little Plover River Wetland Mitigation Site, Town of Stockton.
This is Resolution 213-2022-2024, submitted by the Highway Committee.
Motion by Supervisor Dodge, seconded by Supervisor Hemrich, discussion. There's no further discussion, all those in favor with aye?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Number 17, approving and authorizing a professional service agreement with Syntec for wetland mitigation bank construction services.
This is Resolution 214-2022-2024, submitted by the Highway Committee.
Motion by Supervisor Lattic, seconded by Supervisor Matt Jakowski, discussion. All those in favor with aye?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. I know this wetland mitigation we've been working on for a long time, but it will, it will bear fruit. Number 18, elected officials' compensation for the 2025-2028 term for county clerk, register of deeds, and county treasurer.
This is Resolution 215-2022-2024, submitted by the Human Resources Committee.
Motion by Supervisor Rockman, seconded by Supervisor Shabelski, discussion. Anybody have any discussion? Supervisor Matt Jakowski.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. There was a lot of discussion had on this at the Human Resources Committee. We came together at this 2.5% increase over the four years. We thought it was fair and equitable for these positions for what they do. This always puts the Human Resource Committee and along with this board in an awkward position because we have to take our crystal ball out that none of us have and predict the future. We don't know what the economy is going to do. Are we going to see 5% wage increases next year? Are we going to see 2%? Are we going to see a wage freeze? So it's kind of a tough thing to do. The committee decided on the 2.5% because we felt it was fair, and I would encourage you all to vote for it.
Anybody else have any discussion, comments, thoughts? Supervisor Soik.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And I apologize if I missed this someplace, but where, where is this in standings with the rest of the counties and the state? And again, if I missed it in the packet, I do apologize. I got my computer charging right now, and that's a
My God.
Can I, can I answer that partly, Mr. Chair?
Go ahead.
I can, I can answer part of it. It's very hard to compare with other counties within the state because every county uses their clerk different, every county's register of deeds is different, and every county treasurer throughout the state is different. We are up towards the top. I believe in, in one of the areas, and I don't have that packet, and I don't think it's in this packet, we are number three in the state. But our department, it works a little differently. It was explained to us by HR, it was explained during the McGrath Study. The McGrath Study states that our electeds, our constitutional elected officers, county clerk, registered deeds, treasurer, and then on the odd years is clerk of courts, and what am I missing?
Sheriff.
And sheriff are on the opposite years. Yeah, don't forget the sheriff, the most powerful person in county government. And not because he has a gun. But they're supposed to be close to department heads in their size, and that was another thing we looked at. These are in line with our department heads of similar-sized departments, and actually lower than the department heads with similar-sized departments.
So, the thing for me, and that was one of the items, was also the, and we are near the top three in all, almost all of them, except for one, Rocky County, and the others don't, but we are just one between us and Dane County that has, and I know they're not supposed to talk about population, but there's 590,000 in Dane County. The next one, Kenosha, has 170,000. And I believe that these positions, to some point, has something to do with population, whether it's elections that are handled by the clerk's office, whether it's the treasurer's office that are taking in tax, tax payments and dealing with the processing of that, or sales of properties that goes through register of deeds. So to some point, I do believe that population has something to do with these salaries. And I, I voted no when this was before us, four years ago, and it was because of a lot of the other differences. I don't believe they are all the same. I don't believe all of our other staff department heads are the same because of the fact that every one of them has different duties and different responsibilities. And unfortunately, there are no other jobs that are in the public that are like this, so you have to look at comparable counties. We talk about department heads, and we talk about what is expected of a department head, and, and these department heads, their years of service. When we talk about evaluations, we talk about work performance, and we're, don't get me wrong, we're very lucky to have who we have in all these positions at this time now. But I'm not looking at the people that are in the positions, I'm looking for when I'm not here, when someone else is in these positions or these roles, or any of these other ones, because other counties, as well as us, have had people in these elected positions that were difficult to handle or difficult to deal with because they are elected officials. This, this is a unique, a unique position, and then the fact of having to guess, as Supervisor Matt Jakowski had said, four years out. Now, I, I believe we've had this discussion with Corp. Counsel and other ones in the past about how this needs to be declared, or how they need to know what the salaries are going to be four years out or declared before they take papers. But I know that other counties will tell what's the next year, or their first year salary is going to be, and then they tell them after that that they are going to follow whatever staff gets, and therefore they are told what their salary is going to be. If it's going to be, say, 90,000 when you take out papers your first year, that it could be frozen. Chances are, it probably wouldn't. That would mean everybody in the department or the other, rest of the employees would be frozen. Or if you get 1% or 2%, whatever staff gets, you're going to get the same, but you're never going to make less than 90,000. Other counties seem to be able to do it, and I don't know why that isn't something that we could look at or adopt, because it is very difficult to try and figure out what that's going to be like four years out. That's not before us, but it's, it's something that we can think about or look at or investigate.
Mr. Chair, I would say that, you know, I can't speak to what other counties do other, although I think that some counties are operating under an old statute, 66.197, which did permit changes to official salary during the term, but that was repealed as, repealed effective January 1, 2001. The controlling statute is 59.22 Sub 1, Sub 1, Sub A, and it says that really essentially, not essentially, it states that counties are prohibited from increasing or decreasing an elected official's annual compensation during the official's term of office. So, we, my strong recommendation is to set the salary for the four years tonight. There, there, in my opinion, trying to set it to adjustment for COLA for other employees violates that statute. I would not recommend that.
Thank you. Any other discuss, Supervisor Keller?
Lived in four different counties in my life, most of them in Dane County, and then the most recent, almost 16 years here in Portage County. And I can tell you, this is one of the best places to live on the planet. And one good part of that reason is good employees in our county. And I am a firm believer in compensating employees, good ones, to keep them here. And we want to keep the good employees we have, and if we do lose them, especially in the elected ones, we want qualified people running for those positions. So I have no problem with a little bit extra you're going to offer these people. Thank you.
So I noticed you mentioned qualified people, elected. We, we have a job and a job description that was created by our HR department, both for our county clerk and our treasurer, because those positions were vacated before there was an election or hired based on their qualifications. With the elections, we don't have that. So, Supervisor Soik.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. With what Corp. Counsel had just added to the conversation, I would put forth an amendment of capping the salary for the next four years at $94,344.43 for the three positions. I think that keeps us in line with the law, as being stated, as we are not able to increase during that elected cycle. And if I don't get a second, that's perfectly okay. I will be voting no on the entire amendment.
So, to be clear on your amendment, and to help us understand it, they had 2.5% for each year for four years.
Yep.
What are you proposing to get it to that amount?
Here in the packet, it says, year 2025, 92,000, year 2026, 94,000, year 27, 96, year 28, 99. I am taking the $94,344.43 from the year proposed for 2026, and enacting that immediately upon the election and carrying through through 28. Is that clear enough, or is it clear as mud?
Jen, do you, Jen, do you understand that? Do you have that? Can you, is there a percent we can put, because wasn't that part of it before was, it was a percent?
Are you proposing that to just be a fixed amount?
A fixed amount per year.
Fixed amount per year, correct.
You don't need to assign a percent.
Because then that way, it, it keeps us from violating state statute of increasing their salary o, over the, the time of their elected position.
All right.
So just to be clear, though, could you, now that I'm looking at this chart, you're stating it should be what for each year? For 2025, 2026, 27, and 28 as a fixed rate?
I'm not seconding that, but I'm ready for discussion.
So, again, to be, again, to be clear, you're saying that it'd be the same, same, the rate would be frozen? Okay. Does everybody understand that? Is there a second? Is there a second? Is there a second? Motion fails for a lack of a second. Supervisor Maresi.
If, if I'm just understanding that correctly, it just implies that we couldn't raise the, the salary. I think what he was saying is that we couldn't raise the salary for the next, you know, four years. But by creating this schedule as we have, we're not actually raising the salary, we're setting the salaries for those four years. So.
Correct.
But I, I understand your perspective in trying to, to, to freeze it. So, thank
All right. If there's no further discussion, there's no amendment, there, there's no further discussion. Do you want to do this electronic?
It's your call. I'm ready.
We'll try it. All those in favor of the resolution as written, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed?
One opposed.
No. Supervisor Soik and myself, and Supervisor Haga. Motion carries. Number 19, approving and authorizing a vacant land offer to purchase for Portage County to purchase approximately 42.24 acres of land from Morzella &amp; Son, Inc.
This is Resolution 216-2022-2024, submitted by the Space and Properties Committee.
Motion by Supervisor Don Jankowski, seconded by Supervisor Hemrich, discussion. You guys are ready to vote on this?
Yep.
Heard a lot of, lot of discussion, lot of questions, lot of concerns. Supervisor Hemrich.
Yes.
Use the mic, please. Use the mic. Use the mic, please.
You hear me?
There you go.
I'm on. Hello?
Yep.
Okay. In the fall, I don't remember exactly what, what date, we voted 23 to, 23 to 2 to agree to build a jail outside in a green space and to keep the courthouse I understand from the chatter that, no, we didn't, but that was my impression of that. I would stand to be corrected if I'm wrong. At any rate, I think that this jail discussion has been going on for way too long. We had some opportunity, we had a meeting, and then there was a closed-door session where many parcels of land were discussed, and I take it the committee worked very diligently on this and found a very good offer for us. We buy the acreage, we don't eventually need the acreage, then we can sell it, and I'm sure if we ever decide to sell it, we're going to sell it at a nice profit. So I suggest we move on at this time and get the jail built like we've been talking about for the last 18 or 20 years.
So this committee, Space and Properties, was tasked with trying to find a property, trying to work for, with a property, and again, I, I was criticized of not working with the city of Stevens Point, when it's the committee that's working with the city to some point. And we had asked the city to give us an opportunity to have some property to look at because they own, let's say, all of it. The property came back, and because the price is something that's been questioned on this property, and we've heard testimony that ag land goes for about $5,000, $6,000. I would say ag land, maybe out on a dirt road somewhere, that's ag land being used as ag land would sell for that, although I know my son has just bought in some land, and $8,000, $10,000 an acre is not uncommon for, for land not too far out of the city. The city of Stevens Point offered us land at $35,100 and some change per acre, plus the cost of the road improvements in front of it, plus the cost of intersection to the property. And that was for 18 acres. Then we had asked for another two acres of land to make it 20 acres total. And, trying to look for the notes on that. And, trying to look for the notes on that. For a, for a total of one million one hundred and forty-eight thousand dollars for eighteen They also were going to put a deed restriction on the eighteen acres prohibiting the construction of a courthouse or any other county administrative offices. And another item they had on there was to keep the courthouse and other county administrative offices and functions in the downtown. And then the last item was a multiple choice for us if we were interested in that eighteen acres, and that was to raise the jail, tear it down, and transfer the ownership to the city of Stevens Point at no cost for the, to be redeveloped. Or, we as the county would agree to pay in lieu of taxes seventy thousand dollars annually in perpetuity with a CPI percent increase annually. So, those were the conditions. That committee sent back a response to the city of Stevens Point. The city of Stevens Point rejected that, which in turn tripped the fact that this problem's not going away, and we need to continue to find solutions and answers. That committee was tasked with trying to find a Plan B. They looked at five, the five sites, I believe, we talked about, and in that, there were several supervisors that were there other than just the committee members. They were asked to try and consider the five sites and come to the choice of two sites, whittle it down. Things that they were to consider: shape of lot, closeness or proximity to homes, ease of access to get out of the property, cost, any other restrictions, public access, easy to walk to, to, I'm trying to think of any of the other ones, Don, or anybody else? Can you think of some of the other items that were listed in that? But we tried to cover as many things as we could, high groundwater, construction costs later on, and make a list. Two of them rose to the top. Then we had instructed the real estate agent to investigate those two and report back to the committee. And when they came back to the committee, they found out that at that time, it had reduced itself to one. One of the parcels was not to be considered because of the location and the fact that it was in a, made it unacceptable. So as they moved through the process, that's where we are today with this parcel with the Warzelas, we wanted to get it to the point where we had control over it, because as I had stated before, January of twenty-twenty-three, I had met with the mayor in his office looking at a parcel of land that we were interested in over on Old Eighteen and Berluski, just over the overpass. And then, as we all know, that parcel was purchased by the city in March. That parcel I was not really excited about, although there was a bus stop currently right across the street, sewer and water ran right down Berluski. It was a budding of railroad tracks, but it was close to the residence. I knew that would be a challenge to deal with. So when we look at this parcel now, I look at its location, and I want everybody to realize that it is a budding, heavy industrial business park. Del Monte, the highway department, solid waste, there's a semi-transfer facility there, Monogram Foods run around the clock. And for those who don't know zoning, M-two, heavy industrial zoning covers some of the most noisy, noxious things you can have in your neighborhood. This makes sense for it to be next to that property or adjoining it. The executive Pavelsky had offered a map to some of you with a circles in it, and those circles represent the location in Plover where it's a quarter mile, half mile, three-quarter mile, and mile. So as far as the proximity to homes, in the quarter mile, there are no homes. Again, the one that the city of Stevens Point offered us was actually a budding, two of the properties of six that were in that little subdivision, so their backyard would be the jail, which I wasn't in favor of that either. As you move out from the quarter inch circle to the half inch, now there are five homes. As you go out to the three-quarter, and this is accumulative, there's twenty-four homes. When you move out to the one mile, there's a hundred and forty-seven, which I am one of. This is in my district. When you look at the other map that represents our current position in the city of Stevens Point, the circle represents a quarter mile, which the other one, I said there's nobody in it. That represents two-hundred-and-twelve homes in their current location in a residential I have seen some comments from some people about the children's safety. In that quarter mile in the city of Stevens Point is the library, the children's museum, Saint Steph, Saint Stevens, if I had right, Saint Stevens Playground is one block, and then I think it's Trinity Lutheran School Playground is also within that quarter. There's also three houses down, there is a bed and breakfast. Then I have had the question and the discussion about property values, and mostly, the people that are impacted the most are the people in that forty-acre parcel in Black Forest subdivision. And these comments are coming from a lot of, over in that area, their property values, that it's going to hurt their property values. I have talked to someone who is a commercial appraiser, and some of you may have talked to some other people, but the fact that they live next to a heavy industrial manufacturing right now, however their value of their property is affected, has already been affected by those entities that are already and currently living there. The other part of it was noise, and I had to remind them that the jail is relatively quiet, except for the occasional siren if somebody were to be leaving, and not to confuse it with a fire department. Fire department gets a call, they turn the lights on and the sirens, and away they go. Just for the most part, they're out patrolling, they come in and do their paperwork or whatever, it's back and forth, but for some reason, if they had to leave, not to say that that wouldn't happen, it would happen. Transportation, we talked about it a little bit, about letting people out and changing our policy. We've looked at the possibility of trying to work with our transit to maybe have them have one route in the morning when we let them out and have the buses come down from Walmart, which is a mile and a half away, down to the jails, and then back. And/or if they're heading to Plover, Plover has a Plover taxi to give them a voucher to get them where they need to go. And I believe that if push came to shove and we were really desperate, we'd be able to find a squad, get somebody where they need to go. Understand that we do a lot of things for a lot of people in this jail, we're not going to just have them out in a bout and have to say that fend for yourself. We, and I believe there's only ten percent of them, is what I've been told, that do not have a ride. We have a social worker in there, we have mid-state technical college available to these people to help them get their GED, we have many, many programs, and I've heard that mentioned, too, that we need to work on preventing it. Those people need to understand or that we do a lot here in Portage County. North Central Workforce Development works with them to try and find jobs. I know there's many of them that are employed in many of these businesses in this area to try and help those individuals. We are there to try and help those individuals that have maybe hit rock bottom or decided that where the path that they're going is not a good one, and they need to turn it around. We have all those things in that jail. That's one more reason we need to get the thirty-five out of Apaca and back here for that very reason. That's why we need to get this done. Then I've heard people talk about, you know, when they are outside in the yard, it's during jail time, I says there is, it's not a prison, there's no barbed wire, there's no outside time. Most of the people that are in there are in there for a week, two weeks, thirty days for the most part, the one, the other ones that don't have to come and go, don't. And the sheriff has told me that we don't have Huber Law anymore, that we have ankle bracelets, correct me if I'm wrong, Sheriff, and we don't have public visitation, that's done with tablets and FaceTime. And as technology grows, I believe that you will see more and more virtual visitations or court appearances because of what has happened in Las Vegas where a judge was attacked by somebody. We talk about the security, we talk about court security, and that's a hot topic here. But we talk about those items, and having things done virtual eliminates a lot of that. So we may see that more and more in the future as that technology continues to grow. We talked about the transportation of them and getting them, getting them over here, and how that can be handled. Trying to think, Sheriff, or anybody else? Don, have any other things to add?
This puts our people, if they have to respond from this building, puts them right in the center of the county with access to major roads, not going through residential areas to get out. So access is greatly improved from this standpoint.
Somebody had mentioned to me about trying to get out on Highway B for an emergency or whatever, and I said, you bring up a good point. Imagine trying to come out of Stevens Point and get out to Highway ten. I says, you talk about one signal light there at Highway R and Highway B, could you imagine that if you had to go through six, twelve, fourteen signal lights? So Supervisor Matt Jakowski?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I've heard this before, but how many square feet is our jail, our current jail? Does anybody know? Do you have an idea? Sorry to put you on the spot.
I want to say this tomorrow, thirty-five thousand.
Thirty-five thousand, around.
So, thirty-five thousand, give or take. So, it's going to be a hundred dollars a square to demolish that, and I should be quicker than math in this.
And two zeros.
So that would be thirty-five million. Yeah, that can't be right.
Thirty-five million?
Three point five, three point five million to demolish a jail, and that's, that's maybe on the high end, but it's going to cost us five hundred thousand to, evidently, the source I use for demolish is a little high, but it's going to cost us five hundred thousand to a million to get rid of it. So this land is cheaper than one part of the city's offer to us. Just giving them that jail or having to pay them in perpetuity would cost us as a county more than forty acres is going to cost us in Plover. Think about that for a second. I sent an email on Thursday, February fifteenth, to Rod Sutter, our GSI, or GI, GSI, GIS technician. I sent it during my lunch hour. He replied back to me within fifteen minutes. The man is a GIS. I guess that's why he does it.
That's Rod.
Rod. I always call him, yeah, Rod. What did I call him?
Jeff Hartman.
Rod Sutter, sorry.
The other one is Mr. Hartman.
Yeah, Rod Sutter. Rod did this, quickly got it back to me right away, and I just had him pull some distance. Our current jail to our population center of the county is three miles. The jail site offered by the city is, was a lot less, it's one point four miles. Our current proposed jail site to the population center of the county is actually only two point eight miles. It's less than our current jail. The Marshfield Clinic area on Highway sixty-six to the population center, three point one miles. And then I had him pull some of our far outreach communities. Almond, fourteen point seven miles. Amherst, eleven miles. Junction City, fifteen point five miles. Rochelle, fifteen point one miles. Keller, twelve point eight miles. We, with this site, have a centrally located, easy accessible facility. One of the things that we're seeing with the state, and eventually the state is going to start closing down their juvenile facilities more than they have, they've been talking about it, talking about it, and they're limping them along. We are going to have a juvenile facility at this place, and it's ease of access. Let's get this done, get it moving forward, so we can bring some of those juveniles here and give them the rehabilitation and the work they need. You hit it on it with sending inmates to Apaca. Every day that we have inmates in Apaca, that is opportunities that we are missing to rehabilitate those inmates that are housed in Apaca, because they get no programming in Apaca. Let's move this forward, let's get this building going, and let's get it built.
The other comment that I remember that we talked about was the acreage. Why do we need forty acres? We've, we've been told that we have all kinds of underlying reasons. One of them is, is the fact that the Warzelas have no desire in parceling it off, and this is hard enough to find a parcel anywhere that meets and checks as many boxes as this one does and have a willing seller, but then to demand that they have to cut it in half is not, does not work for this. So that has been looked at, it has been discussed. The other part is, is that I was quoted wrong in the newspaper, the jail was in this building where the DA's office, it used to be in the upstairs. Was it ever in the downstairs?
No.
Okay. So it was, I had stated to the reporter that it was in the upstairs, and I believe she corrected it later, but shortly after, they decided that it's not big enough, that we can't add on, so they, I believe there was houses across the road, and then we had that tore down, and they decided to build a jail across the road, and that went from sidewalk to sidewalk to sidewalk. They built on every square inch of land that was available, and what, ten, fifteen years later, we started shipping people to Apaca? It's not big enough. Well, we should add on. Uh-oh, we don't have enough land. We've done that twice now. I don't think we should do that. I think we should have enough room to grow, so that, and I'm looking, and I'm talking out ten, twenty, thirty, forty, fifty, a hundred years, I don't know, but they're going to have enough land, and that land's not going to get any cheaper, and that group would have to do the same thing that we're looking at trying to do, and then try and fit it in someplace that's not excited to have a jail. Here we have an opportunity to be able to do that and be in there first. And again, the property, the value of it, there's land that is south of Furniture and Appliance Mart that is listed with First Weber, that is ag land, and it is right next to Crossroads Commons, which is part of the reason that the village said that they'd like to see that property not taken for a jail, because they don't get any tax revenue, and whatever may go there may be a big tax draw, which is how the government makes money. That land is seventy-four acres, and it is listed for two point four-three million, that comes out to thirty-two thousand eight hundred a foot, acre, I'm sorry. So to say that we are off-base, the city, again, thirty-five-one, south of Furniture and Appliance Mart, thirty-two-eight an acre, and thirty thousand dollars an acre for the land in Plover that we're looking at, this is all well within its means. There's been talk about other reasons for that to be such a high-priced. I get it, a lot of people don't deal with commercial land. This is not ag land. Mr. Supervisor Shabelski and I had gone back and forth, Sophia.
If, I, I will say, actually, because I saw one of the public speakers earlier quoted the exact same study I was reading and I emailed you about, and I called the author up at UW Extension to ask about it, and she specifically said that it was for ag land that was to be reused as ag land, that they, that she called some of her colleagues, and it was not taking any consideration of development. So after a couple days, I got some information back from them, and I was satisfied that, that, because I had the exact same concerns.
And I, I credit Supervisor Shabelski. He reached out to me to ask the questions because he had questions, and again, it's not a world that most people run in, don't expect that he would buy commercial land somewhere, but ag land next to things that are, are high value are, is a staging area or a holding area for development. It comes from ag land, and that's where you develop for residential, that's where a business park. So when you look at ag land, Portage County Business Park, that was ag land, and as we got into it, and we bought it, I can't remember what we paid for it, but, so, enough about that. We've got an election going on tonight, too. So Supervisor Jankowski, then Supervisor Splinter, then Supervisor Dodge.
Just to make note that the county garage is just south of this. The county garage has our emergency operation center, our backup emergency operation center. At that site, at the county garage site, the sheriff's department has an evidence storage place where they store vehicles and things that are evidence. And also, our radio tower is down there, so we would have to tie into the radio tower. This makes it far easier to tie into the radio tower. This makes it far easier to tie into the radio tower being adjacent to that site.
So Don brings up a good point. That creates a second campus for us, because we have the highway department there, we have solid waste is there, the trail is alongside of it, so if they have to go out on patrol with the snowmobile, they jump on the trail and they're gone. Supervisor Splinter.
Yes, I, to go from the city's offer with all the strings attached well into the future to a green space site that's next to our existing facilities, I don't know how you got them to sell it, but I couldn't think of a better place to put it. And when voting on anything, I like to, I always like to hear from the experts. I'm not an expert in law enforcement, Sheriff Hager isn't either, but I know he's shy and in the corner a lot, but I'd like to ask the sheriff just for his thoughts, because this is a big deal for his department.
He'll come up and talk, he loves to talk.
Thank you. No, I think it's an ideal location in regards to, number one, we store our emergency operation equipment down at our new impound facility that's down at the highway department, so that would be connected there for joint operations, so our MRAP and emergency boats and items like that that are stored in there. Right now, we have to travel down there to pick them up to respond, and we'll be able to respond right from there. Secondly, in regards to response for the outlying areas, in regards to our response areas, we have the interstate right there, we have County B, County H-H, County R running up, so the response is ideal for us in regards to emergency traffic for driving. As you know, I've stated in the past, driving through City Stevens Point with emergency traffic is very challenging, and probably is my worst fear for my officers in regards to driving, is that something were to happen in Stevens Point. So, you know, looking at this, you know, I was involved in regards to the committee in regards to the land opportunities that were available, and you know, and I heard a lot of public comment in regards to, you know, why, why weren't the public involved? Because what Sheriff Hager stated is, as soon as we get people involved, the property gets sold out from underneath the county. The second thing is, is why hasn't people been more involved in this process? From 2015, we've had meetings, we've had all kinds of public input in regards to that. I had eight meetings set for the public in 2016, seventeen. I had eight, or five people show up, not eight, five, out of eight meetings, and this was all over the county. I'm just telling you that when it comes down to planning this facility, yes, Jody Hollister from the DOC is gonna be very involved after the point we buy this land, but I surely was not going to involve the Department of Corrections until the county board made a decision. It's a waste of their time through this process, through my last ten years, so I figured we will wait, and then they will be involved with the details of the jail and the best practices and things like that that we go into design.
Question of the sheriff.
Supervisor Hammerick, then Supervisor Pataki. Use the mic, please.
Use the mic.
He'll hear ya.
I assume that you're currently still getting our staff squads serviced at the county garage, is that correct?
That is incorrect. We hired back in 2015 a full-time mechanic now to service our fleet. We do do some service work through the highway department, but the majority of it, actually, we do internal now.
Okay, my mistake.
And then the other thing that you brought up in regards to inmates, today we have a total of a hundred and thirty-seven. We have forty-three over in Opaaca, we have twelve on at home monitoring, eleven at other locations, and then seventy-three in our facility.
Supervisor Pataki.
Can I answer my question?
Very good. You know, as we go on, these things keep coming back to me, there's been a lot of discussion. I don't need you, Sheriff, I'm good, you can sit down, thank you. You know, we talked about bringing in the public and all the rest of that, and I can cite one other instance where Executive Pavelski and I, and Todd, our facilities manager, we met with a business or talked to a business on-site twice, looking at land, and then, and then, nothing. We sent emails, no response, phone calls, no response. Somebody somehow, somewhere, so when we talk about that, it all sounds good, but it wasn't, it wasn't what it appeared to be. Size of the jail, two-hundred beds, we don't need a bed, a thing that, and we've said this, and again, I will state it, that the people that talk about a jail, this doesn't mean there's going to be two-hundred inmates in it. They have to understand, and Don Jenkowsky was corrected on this last time, that it is recommended by the state to have a certain number of individuals in that jail to keep things, it doesn't run at capacity, so that if somebody reffens, that you have a bed or a spot for a person. And you have to understand that currently, we don't have the room or the space to segregate, and this is one place where they need to have male and female. So you have male and female minors, male and female juveniles, male and female, there's all of this separation that goes on and on and on, and when you don't have enough room or enough capacity, you can't do that. We've heard, "Why can't we build downtown?" We still, there's, you know, it's like, nobody ever said we couldn't build downtown, but we identified, and this body voted, and the main reason, I understand why, was the fact of parking and the cost of ten million dollars, the ongoing costs of operating it because of elevators, the maintenance that go with elevators, inspections and repair, and then staffing because of having multiple floors, and then again, when we get to the point to need to add on, we either gotta go up at an expensive cost because we're staging stuff. Lack of room was the main reason for it. Accessibility was the other part. So when we hear it over and over and over again, "You can build downtown, you can build up," yes, we can, but this body decided or chose not to for all those reasons. The EOC was mentioned. EOC is currently in the sheriff's department in the basement, but if we are to move to the new location, Sheriff, I think we're gonna have to have the new EOC in that building for that reason, and one of the things that's nice about that is anytime there's an emergency, the EOC is Emergency Operations Center. Anytime that's activated, and we have to do it, the sheriff's department is always involved, as well as highway is always involved in it in one way, shape, or form, whether they're closing roads, moving debris, fixing roads, putting up barricades, whatever is involved, highway is there, and then this, these two departments would be right next to each other. There's fiber optics that are out there, that we ran out there for that EOC center that's on the highway as well, that would be at this facility. That's all I had until it's like something else comes up. Supervisor Dodge.
I'm really pretty excited about this parcel. It creates a campus, as you mentioned. It gives possibilities for expansion of solid waste. I understand the processing at the recycling center is much different than it was when we first built the building, and so there are options for solid waste and highway department. So I think we're missing the boat when we talk about buying the forty-two acres for just a jail, because I think it gives us some options and opportunities for those other buildings as well. And I guess I think about the current jail and the garage, which is totally inadequate for the number of squads that we have, and I think the worst part of the whole complex over here is the Sally port. I mean, it takes major driving skills to get into it, and there's room for one squad when you're emptying the car and taking out an inmate or a potential inmate. I think it's very dangerous. New jails have larger areas for the Sally port, so you can manage what's going on within that area. So I'm really excited about this parcel. I will vote to approve moving out there.
For the rest of the folks that don't understand what a Sally port is, it's a parking garage for the, where the officer, if he's bringing in someone from the public that's being arrested or detained, is brought in, the garage doors open, they're brought in, the garage doors are closed, and then they come out of the squad car, and then they are taken into the jail. So they're not out and being, coming out of the vehicles out in the public or whatever, they're inside already. Supervisor Matt Chakowski.
Thank you, Mr. Sheriff. One thing I forgot to mention that I wanted to, this is taking another forty-two acres out of agricultural production. That's very near one of the Village of Plover's wells. It's, I believe, within the Little Plover River watershed, so with the Village of Plover's work on creating Dan Mahoney Conservancy area, with our work with the highway department creating the wetland mitigation site, we're taking large amounts of farmland out of that Little Plover watershed. That's another positive to this site.
Yes, there's a high-capacity well that services the two-forties. This one and the one to the east. Anybody else? Supervisor Marassi.
Yeah, just a quick clarification question. I see in the, let's see, one, two, three, fourth resolution, or whereas, the purpose of this resolution is to approve the signing of the vacant land offer to purchase for Portage County to pursue purchasing land only at this time. What's the point, then? There's no funding vote here. We're not actually doing anything, we're just kinda testing the waters of where we are as a group. And it seems to me like it's probably not a good practice to figure out where the vote is before you know if you got the funding.
So I will, I will try and explain this first, and then I'll look to these two here to help me, but that's where, again, government gets a little wonky. It's...
Only if we make it wonky.
Who's to sign the offer? Who has the authority? Nothing's really, as you well know, nothing happens until it goes through the board. So if this is approved, that's granting the authority to sign the offer, the purchase, correct Supervisor? Why do I wanna call you Supervisor?
I supervise a lot of stuff. Correct, this is authorization for the county to sign the pre-negotiated offer to purchase, authorizes the county executive to do so, and then through our agent will provide that to the Warzillas for their expected acceptance, and then we work through the title company, and there are various contingencies associated with that. And prior to closing, as stated in the resolution, there would be a subsequent budget amendment coming back before the county board for, for the money for the purchase price, but that would happen then prior to closing.
This is to initiate the document.
Correct. Just start the contingency and work with the title company and proceed through those toward closing.
I understand that, but didn't we learn from the last time that if you don't ask for the money first, you might be woefully disappointed?
I...
Mr. Sheriff.
Disagrees. Supervisor Syke.
So I'll direct my comment to you, Mr. Sheriff, of the previous comment. We were...
Use the mic, please.
I'm trying. We were told, "Why would we spend this money when we didn't have a site? Why would you authorize spending all this money when you don't even have a site picked out? You don't have a site picked out. Why don't you pick out a site and then come back and ask for the money to buy the site?" So I believe that Space and Properties has done exactly what they were supposed to do by going out and finding a site, so we're not repeating the same mistake we did six months ago. Thank you, Mr. Sheriff.
Jenny, do you have anything to the money? Nothing happens without Jenny.
I just tell her just bring the checkbook.
I think I would just agree with what Corporation Council Hickethier stated in terms of, you know, once the offer is signed, that process starts, and then prior to closing, we would bring forth a budget adjustment for the land purchase that was in alignment with the activities prior to closing, you know, in terms of the dollar amount and anything that would come up as a result of the due diligence process, and that would be in advance of that closing, and we would adjust the budget at that time. That gives us a little time to work on the details of how to finance that as well.
Just to follow up, I completely understand the process, and I appreciate the work that needs to go into it to get to the point where we actually are doing something, right? Because we all agree that something needs to be done. Unfortunately, I really feel like the process in part of this, again, it's all about process and who we have involved in that process, has been exclusionary from the beginning. We have a lot of committees holding their cards close to themselves, and we don't have our fundamental philosophy of what's guiding us through this process actually delineated yet. What we have is a need, and that need is being pushed as hard as it can without the due diligence of what our philosophy is about incarceration in this community. I understand the sheriff's predicament one-hundred-and-ten percent. He's out of compliance, he's being granted, grandfathered in, you know, as probably a great favor from the state and to, for us as a county to have to use the concurrent facility that we have. But I have not heard or listened to any discussion amongst any committee about the philosophy of incarceration in this community.
So this is on only, the agenda item is the purchase of the land.
And I anticipated you saying this.
Very good.
Right.
So please, please continue.
What I'm saying here is, we have the cart before the horse, right? We do not have a philosophy, and therefore, we're buying land, and sure, this land does not necessarily need to be used for a jail, but then we're stuck with another forty-two acres of land that we have to dole out like we did with the Portage County Business Council, which repeatedly, over and over and over again, we have heard, "God, we gotta get out of the land-selling business, we gotta get out of the land-selling business."
Point of order.
If this project does not move through, then we're gonna be in the land-selling business again. So I would love it for us to have a philosophy of incarceration before we move this forward. I think Ms. Jennings' email that she sent to supervisors is very poignant and something we should take into consideration, especially with National Institute of Incarceration.
Again, I'm gonna remind you, this is about the purchasing a parcel of land, so let's talk about the land. I'm not talking about building a building or how it's being operated.
I understand that, but ultimately, this land purchase is to build and operate a building, which is where we're putting our values as a community. I'm not opposed to this project. I know we need it. I will advocate...
So the time to have that discussion is when we're in the design and...
And I will advocate for the purchase of land, should we need it, when that time comes. I do not believe this piece of land is the right thing we should be doing for our community. It's gonna expand costs over the long term in a major way, and we do not have a plan in place.
You expand on that, on the expansion of costs. I'm curious. You're assuming or suggesting that the costs are gonna go up? Can you please expand on that?
Those costs will go up for the incarcerated. Anybody who is in that jail facility will have increased costs due to increased lawyer fees for mileage, for release.
Telecommunications. Go on. I, you know, I'm, again, we're talking about the land purchase, so...
I appreciate that.
I'm sorry, Mr. Sheriff, point of order.
It's really fun.
And I'm gonna rule, Mr. Syke, this is, this is getting off the track, and it's off from land.
It's interesting that you get to talk as much as you'd like during the meeting, but I get shut off when I ask really tough questions. Yes, the privileges of the, to share, I understand that.
Supervisor Dodge.
One reason we're here tonight with this particular subject is because the night we talked about buying land from the city, the first thing Supervisor Maurici did was place a restriction on the county.
It's me arresting you.
And that changed my vote right off the bat.
Any other discussion? If not, are you ready?
Just a sec. Fine, solo.
All those in favor with yes, vote yes, and opposed, vote no.
Supervisor Morrow? Supervisor Oki? Supervisor Oki?
Let me see how stupid we are. Smarter, so...
Supervisor Oki?
You're muted.
Sorry.
Supervisor Hakala? Supervisor Sislevich?
You're muted.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Motion carries.
Number twenty, authorizing a twenty-twenty-four budget amendments and transfers.
This is Resolution two hundred and seventeen dash twenty-twenty-two dash twenty-twenty-four, submitted by the Finance Committee. This does require a two-thirds supermajority vote.
Motion by Supervisor Rakowski, seconded by Supervisor Dodge. Discussion. There's no further discussion. All those in favor with aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Opposed? Motion carries. Uh, motion to adjourn. Take a motion by Supervisor Dubek, seconded by Supervisor Hemrich. All those in favor with aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you, everybody.
A video of this meeting is available for viewing on the city's website, StevensPoint.com/videos.